convening into open session. Sorry, are you up? You have them going? Okay, here we so. The first, the next item on our agenda, let's see here. Well, first of all, I'd want to welcome our ICSC students to the table. Can you please introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name's Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Prebble and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
My name is Stacy Martinez and I am a representative for Green Bay West and I'm a junior. I'm just a representative.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, let's see here. Kinsey, we don't need to do a roll call again or anything, right? I don't think so. Okay, so next, the next thing on our agenda is. A board member's school assignments for next year. These, these assignments would take effect July 1st and we, we've tweaked them a little bit from the last meeting. There were some concerns and so I'm just gonna open up to discussion to the board if there's anything else that we need to talk about with regard to these assignments. Not seeing any, then we can just move on. Um, to action items. Here, okay, you guys want to go ahead and do the motion?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Kinsey?
Is there any discussion on that?
Oh, discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. Are you signed in? Just everyone bear with us. I know. It'll be for Dean.
Gerlach? Yes.
Okay. All right, um.
Hold on.
Okay.
All votes have been entered in the motion as carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. All right. Next is B resignation of staff.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered in the motion as carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is C retirement of staff.
I move that three timer to stay up, staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, next is D transfer of staff.
I move that the transfer of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, so I just want to take a moment to kind of let you all know that we just voted on a transfer that is going to bring Mr. McNabb as the new principal at West High School. If you'd like to come on up and tell it up.
Dexter, if you could have a seat for a second, please. Thank you. You didn't know you were gonna give a speech tonight. We were in, in filling this position looking for an internal candidate with high school experience and extensive. Thanks for your time Dexter. Internal employee, high school admin experience and extensive IB training and you are the guy and we're grateful to have you Dexter.
Hey, thank you. Thank you each and every one of you guys for the opportunity. Also thank to Miss Vicki Bauer and her hard work and dedication to to this district to have the belief in me that I can continue to leave West High School into the years to come. Do the IB lives and also do what's right for the kids of all kids that's coming walking through the doors of West High School. So once again, I'm blessed and honored and I'm eager to continue the tradition at West High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Um, we're moving on to E termination of staff.
I move that the termination of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next on the agenda, um, we're going to be joined by Josh for any questions regarding these votes that are related to bids for work.
I move that MCC be awarded the bid for asphalt at Edison Middle School in the amount of $390,384.96 as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, discussion questions. Go ahead, Brian.
This is one of the things that I talked about in the referendum. That's one of the, the track at Edison is open to the community. It's something that neighbors can use, the neighborhood can use and as a track coach or former track coach in a neighboring district for middle school, this is a track that desperately needed to be replaced. So I'm glad this will be said, assuming this passes.
Yes, thank you. You're correct that as some tracks, it's on City Parkland. So as part of that arrangement, it is open and available to the public as, as any city park would be.
Okay. Any other questions, any discussion at all? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Andrew, are you able to vote? Thank you. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Prebble and Redsmith Asphalt Bid.
I move that NEAB awarded the bid for asphalt at Prebble High School and Redsmith K8 in the amount of $540,843.83 as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion questions. I, when would this work be slated to begin, Josh?
This work should begin this summer.
Is that the same with Edison?
Yes, all of these asphalt projects.
Okay. Go ahead, James.
Do we need to amend the motion because that's the incorrect amount? Thank you.
I was just going to bring that up. Yes, I think the amount there is just for Prebble.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the other amount?
I'm getting my calculator out.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'd like to amend my first motion. That we award the contract to NEA for $540,843.83 for the asphalt at Prebble High School be approved.
Second.
Any discussion about the amendment? Okay. Kinsey, can you, we take a vote on the amendment?
Online voting is now open.
Are we, are we voting on an amendment?
Yes.
Or are we voting on? Okay.
Amendment, this amendment to the first motion.
I made the change in board docs.
Do we need to vote on, we, we vote on the first motion? Okay. Um. Okay, so everyone hit the pause button here. Go ahead.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Go.
And request unanimous consent.
All right. Can I do an all in favor? All in favor? I oppose. Okay. Go ahead.
Likes to make a motion that NEAB awarded the bid for asphalt at Prebble High School in the amount of $540,843.83 as presented be approved.
All right, second. Discussion. All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. I think I'm gonna have to take a voice vote for this since you already voted once on it, so we'll just go through it. Becker?
Aye.
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Girl?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we need to do a separate motion for the bid at Redsmith. Do we have an amount? Okay, very good.
I move that NEAB awarded the bid for asphalt at Redsmith K8 in the amount of $676,933.43 as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Brian, can you just read that amount one more time?
Okay. Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is Porelier Parking Lot Asphalt Bid.
I move that NEAB awarded the bid for asphalt for the Porelier Parking Lot in the amount of $250,359.05 as be, as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, the Porelier lot, this is project funding out of 2324. This is not referendum.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is I. Lombardi Track Asphalt Bid.
I move that NEAB awarded the bid for asphalt for the Lombardi Track in the amount of $240,787.25 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, yeah, just a few more of these votes and then we can move on. Next is the purchase of Southwest Stadium Artificial Turf Materials and Installation.
I move that Midwest Sport and Turf Systems be awarded the bid for artificial turf materials and installation at the new Southwest baseball fields in the amount of $690,217.50 as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. And finally, Prebble Stadium Redevelopment Project.
I move that IEI be awarded the bid for general site and building construction as part of the Prebble Stadium Redevelopment Project in the amount of $4,212,947.05 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Discussion. I'm just gonna pause here for a second and recognize that our community has through the referendum committed to this work and just take this moment to express my appreciation for that. Referendum is, you know, that we just passed in November is going to bring a lot of change, positive change to our district and I just wanted to pause a moment and express some gratitude for that. And any discussion? Go ahead.
As a student too, I know that everyone is gonna really appreciate all the changes because some of them definitely needed to be made at the schools.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
I sent a meeting of sports officials a week ago and two football officials said that they would be doing games at Prebble because of the turf when it comes in, so taking into consideration how hard it is to find officials, that's going to help any soccer track officials out there and football officials just and the same thing at West when that stadium is complete, getting people to help work at our schools by taking that pride of ownership kind of what you were mentioning as well with it, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Gerlach?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, very good. That completes our, our special board meeting. Now we're gonna move on to yes, I, do we need to do a motion? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, we're going to adjourn into our, um, into our regular work session. Okay, all right. I'd like to welcome you all to our work session for May 8th, 2023. And I'd like to see all these people in the room. We have a big night, so let's start with the roll call. Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch? Here. Leighton and Warren?
Here.
McCoy? Here. Becker? Gerlach?
Here.
Okay, all board members are in attendance. The next thing on our agenda is the open forum. So we're going to start with a public forum. We have a couple of people that we are going to hear from. The first, Josh, are we gonna do the online one first? Okay, thank you very much. We're doing them in the order that they were submitted. Kinsey, can you keep the time as well? Thank you. Okay. Helen, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, could you please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
All right, do I start now?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Helen Vandahe. I live at 2538 Trevino Drive in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm in the Green Bay School District and I have four kids, three of which are in the Green Bay School District. They attend Edison, Wilder, and DaVinci. When I heard that Green Bay was going to restructure the school and try to improve enrollment, I was really excited. Green Bay has been starting to have a really bad reputation and it just feels really good to have my kids in schools that are starting to, to really thrive and try to get better. I'm all for the renovations and the consolidations of the school. We did have some old buildings and I'm happy to see that we're trying to change the school's reputation. I'm an actuary and making sure companies are financially solvent and measuring risk is part of my day-to-day task. However, I'm worried about the funds that we're spending versus the reward that we'll receive. According to Green Bay Press Gazette, DaVinci School was purchased for $265,000 and we put in $4.4 million in renovations. We're now looking to move that school to a location that's about the same size, which is Webster, and spend another million dollars to update the Webster School before DaVinci can move in. So here are my thoughts, and this is purely from a financial perspective. DaVinci is a moneymaker for the Green Bay School District. It would make more sense to me to move it to a bigger school and grow the program, say maybe even add a gifted high school so that our DaVinci kids do not leave the district after eighth grade. My daughter was in DaVinci and she's now in the DePere School District because Green Bay couldn't offer what she wanted. But going to a school that is about the same size seems like a lateral move that will cost us another million dollars. I'm not understanding what the purpose is behind it. So if you look at both buildings in terms of resale, Webster is in the business district and it will be easy to resell, especially given the fact it has a parking lot. DaVinci, on the other hand, was a vacant, a vacant building for a long time and before we bought it and there were frequent break-ins and it was often used by homeless. DaVinci adds high-end education in the downtown area where professionals work. This increases the incentive for working downtown and it's part of the Greater Downtown Revival Plan. Each year, the Historic Preservation Committee of Brown County Historical Society presents awards of businesses, organizations, and individuals for their effort to preserve, restore, and adapt for reused vintage and historical buildings in Brown County. Well, in 2016, DaVinci won the BCHS Historic Preservation Award. So I'm worried about our deficit. I think the restructuring of the schools will bring in more money. However, I want to make sure that we're not just throwing funds away for no reason. I think if we move DaVinci, it should be to bring in more money to the Green Bay School District, which is what we're doing with the other schools. Why don't we keep DaVinci where it is and use the money that we're going to spend to renovate Webster and to re, the resale dollars of Webster and put those funds towards other schools such as East and Prebble and help improve our program. I want our district to be incredible and great where people want to come in instead of always trying to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is, the next person who'd like to speak is Nathaniel Jackson? Have you come up to the microphone? Right there at the podium, please. Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
I am Nathaniel Jackson. My address is 1214 Claus Street. Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54302. My wife and I are parents of two children in Green Bay Public Schools, a son at Baird and a daughter at Edison Middle where I teach. My wife and I strongly support attendance boundaries that represent and unite our diverse community in every district school. And we hope that this is a priority throughout the process of planning major changes in the use of our buildings. Students of similar backgrounds should not be inequitably concentrated at one school or another. Economic, linguistic, racial, and ethnic groups, for example, may be clustered in certain neighborhoods or parts of Green Bay. Our schools should ensure that students can learn and get along with those who are both alike and different in a variety of ways. Being community-ready requires understanding and appreciating the many different kinds of people with whom we live and work. By interacting regularly with representative sample, sample of our community at school, students will be more prepared to become effective leaders and responsible citizens, both locally and globally. Knowing the depth of their own community is cultural enrichment that primes young people for more meaningful experiences as they study or travel the wider world. Such experiences were very important for me in my journey as a bilingual teacher and now with a family who speaks Spanish at home. Both my children are bilingual and reading above grade level in both languages. Research from Harvard economist Raj Chetty shows that students tend to have greater upward mobility if they are friends with students whose families have higher incomes and educational attainments. Such transformative friendships are less likely when income levels at a school are uniform. We have the opportunity to unite and overcome division when we learn from each other and with each other. The planned reorganization of our school's facilities might be the ideal time to work creatively to reset attendance boundaries to achieve equity. And as, as I was looking at, I was, I'm, it's very unclear to me how far along we are in planning new attendance boundaries and the shifting of them, and I know that cost is a big issue. Busing is a big part of cost. But I really hope, like I said, that, that these priorities that I've laid out are taken into account as, as much as they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next. We're going to transition into our facilities master planning task force recommendations. So if you all would like to come on up to the table. As they're, as they're doing that, I'm just going to talk a little bit about this task force. They had eight meetings, I believe, and these were long and detailed meetings with a lot of data and a lot of hard work. There were, I think, 26 members. And, and that group consisted of parents and students and representatives. And that group consisted of parents and students and representatives from throughout our district. It was a huge time commitment and honestly, I'm gonna probably throughout this express, well, first, I just want to express my gratitude. It wasn't a small thing to commit to this. It was a huge ask and I went to all the meetings I could, which turned out to be six, and what I witnessed, and I'm just speaking for myself now, what I witnessed was such determination and openness and just sort of camaraderie and cooperative thinking. I could tell right away that you kind of understood the mission and you understood what was at stake. Because the stakes are high and we want to get this right. So with that, did you want to speak to Vicki? Go ahead. Hi. We're going to start with a little bit of the history of Green Bay Area Public School District to set the groundwork for the presentation tonight. And this information comes from a book that was written by Dr. Thomas Joint, who was a former superintendent here at Green Bay Area Public School District. When reviewing the history of the district, two important facts stand out consistently since the onset of this district back in, was it 18? Where's Lori Blakesley? 1820s? I think it was 1820. The two things that stand out are that change is inevitable and that the Board of Education, the group that oversees this district, always put kids first. Our district has tackled facilities issues for decades while still improving the educational opportunities for our students. The first half of the 1900s experienced steady enrollment growth even through wartime, while schools were rapidly aging. When the 1970s hit, enrollment slowed down and by the end of the decade, enrollment was down nearly 4,500 students. With lower enrollment in aging facilities back then, decisions were made to close schools and rearrange our boundaries. By the 18, by 1982-83 school year, enrollment was down by another 1,800. And while high school enrollment was low, a dramatic increase was projected at the elementary level. Despite controversies in the 80s, the district continued to be a leader in educated and creative ways when it came to child-centered achievements. And then came the 90s. In the 1990s, our school district saw dramatic growth again. Two new elementary schools were opened in 91, one on the east side, one on the west. By 94, there was a critical need to evaluate aging facilities against the sharp enrollment growth. At the time, three of our four high schools were already near capacity. The focus of the 1990s made facility improvements a priority and our voters supported a referendum, 55.8 million at the time, that was in 2000, to improve east, southwest, and west, making them state-of-the-art schools at that time. And Superintendent Dan Neerad had said at that point, "When a community understands what is needed for its kids, great things can happen." In 99, the district built Red Smith. This was the last time the district made any major boundary changes, 1999. In the 2000s, the district continued to address the needs of growing enrollment on the east side. Baird Elementary was built, doubling the size. And we also added additions to Dan's Eisenhower, Martin, Sullivan, and Red Smith. However, in 2016, the district began to experience a decline in enrollment again. Our last boundary change was made in 2019. Many of you will remember that. We shifted Jefferson Elementary over to Fort Howard and then turned the existing Jefferson Elementary into our Head Start Learning Center. In the 2000s, we had new schools added. We added John Dewey Learning Academy of Learning, Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners, Northeast Wisconsin School of Innovation, and the Catherine Johnson Academy of Enriched Virtual Learning. Today, the district is again facing aging facilities, declining enrollment, which by the way, a reminder, that's both state and national declining in enrollment and projected budget deficits. The task force joins us tonight to share their recommendations for how the district can address these important challenges while maintaining Green Bay Area Public School District as a vibrant school district that meets the needs of all of our students with modern learning facilities. We're going to ask that the board hold questions until the end. The team will present and then we'll open it up for questions and conversation. Okay, thank you, Vicki. All right, guys. I don't know who's kicking it off. Take it away, though.
Hi, everybody. Love us, love over Hagan. I would like to say that I went to Green Bay. I feel like everybody else is going to start listing the schools they went to. Unfortunately, I am a transplant. I'm sorry. I did go to UW-Green Bay. I played for the Phoenix back in the day. I am a Director of Business Services for the School District of Sheboygan Falls.
Good afternoon. My name is Reed Welsh. I'm a retired educator. I was in the Abbotsford School District for 39 years where I retired as a district administrator there. Since moving to Green Bay, I've been working with UWGB with their student teachers. So I met the opportunity to be in a lot of your buildings. In addition, I've served on a couple of other committees and I've also been on the Board of Governance for JDOL and NEW, so I'm very familiar with the district. And I'd like to applaud what I've seen too.
Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. When I was younger, I started out at Martin and then I moved to Da Vinci and I'm now at Southwest. I'm also a junior and I'm the Secretary of Interest City Student Council here.
Hi. I'm Sir Mans. I attended MacArthur, Baird, McCullough, and I also went through Edison and now I'm a senior at Preble. I'm also the Vice President of Interest City Student Council.
Good evening. I'm Jill Thede. I'm an electrical engineer and I've spent 30 years in this community, working in both manufacturing and project management and sales. I'm currently, I made a shift into education. I'm an Associate Dean of Engineering at NWTC. But I'm also a graduate of Annie Jackson Elementary and Franklin Middle School and very pleased to be here tonight with you to talk about the task force recommendations.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, before we proceed with tonight's slide presentation, on behalf of the task force, I'd like to extend our appreciation to the board for giving the committee this unprecedented autonomy to work together to seek a resolution to the impending issues facing the Green Bay School District and present a working plan for the future GBAPS facilities. In addition, the task force would like to thank ATS R for their guidance throughout the project, providing the initial building analysis and pertinent data when asked. Chuck, Nancy, and Peter, they've been invaluable, providing the information and the answers to our questions, and there were many throughout the process. So having gone through a similar process as a district administrator to close a school building and secure a building referendum, albeit in a smaller district, I witnessed firsthand the success of evolving the stakeholders and making what is ultimately tough decisions. And the stakeholders of the future GBAPS are many, well beyond the 26 members of the task force. Parents, community, senior citizens, businesses, staff, students, you know, families considering moving into the district, families looking to move out of the district or open enrolling their children now the district are all vested in the decisions the board makes concerning the future GBAPS facilities. Because of the commitment and trust of the board, the diverse representation of the task force and the guidance of ATS R, the board will be presented an unbiased recommendation focused on the data shared with the task force in the areas of building capacity, building upgrades, and future budget considerations. As a committee, our task was to present the board a recommendation that best utilizes the available capacity of the 42 schools throughout the district and a plan that reduces operational expenses by at least 10%. The data the task force was presented included current and projected building capacities. ATS R also provided specific facility condition index known as SCI and educational adequacy EA scores for each district building. The district shared with the task force the anticipated budget projections, shortfalls beginning with the 24-25 fiscal year and compounding beyond that. It was clear maintaining the status quo and doing nothing is not an option because approximately 80% of any school budget in the state of Wisconsin is devoted to staffing, staff salaries, and benefits. The district is choosing to tackle operational budget considerations with the goal of limiting the impact on staffing and programming as much as possible. Throughout the process, no school was targeted specifically for closure, remodel, or redistricting for any reason other than adaptability, capacity, and location. Recognizing that change is hard, the recommendation put forward in tonight's presentation provides a path for an improved learning environment for all students in the district. It is the culmination of careful study, respectful debate, and democratic consensus of a group of 26. It did not take long into this series of eight meetings to recognize that this group, of which many are here tonight behind us, with varied backgrounds, shared the same passion and conviction for the success of GBAPS and its most precious commodity, the children of the district. So that said, we can get to the slide presentation. I gotta get my notes organized here. I'm assuming Josh is just going forward, okay. These are the members of the task force. I mentioned 26 of diverse backgrounds, interest in the schools. And again, I'd like to compliment that group on the work that they did. We divided this presentation into sections and just moving forward, Viva will walk us through the call to action and Jill will explain the processes used throughout the process or throughout the meetings. Sawyer will explain the drivers and Lavia will then share the results, the recommendations moving forward from the task force. Our mission, we are transforming the Green Bay Area Public Schools, efficiently using resources to provide excellent learning environments. While at the same time, this facilitates the district's mission to educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. And then the goal was for every school that has closed or repurposed the relocated students' new school has improved educational opportunities. And with that, I'll pass on to Viva.
There we go. Okay, so our call to action. The Green Bay Area Public School District's student enrollment is steadily declining and the drop is expected to continue. Enrollment is not only declining here but also nationally. Between fall 2019 and fall 2020, pre-k through high school enrollment dropped by 1.4 million and is projected to only fall further. The highest declines are on the western two-thirds of our district, so the river isn't the only divider, as many of us may be thinking right now. While the number of students open enrolling has remained the same, our district has consistently had a 1% increase in eligible voucher students each year. Presently, one in four seats in each of our district's buildings are empty. In the coming 10 years, that is predicted to become one in three seats, leaving us with an issue of declining enrollment and therefore less money. There we go. This is a map of all of our district schools as they stand now. With keeping things as they were on that map, our district is presently facing a $20 million deficit in the upcoming 24-25 school year. Therefore, we need to act now. This decision can no longer be put off. Additionally, in 1993, when our revenue limits were set, we were one of the lowest-spending districts, but now that is changing due to increasing inflation rates and the limits remain the same. With the increasing inflation, keeping the revenue limit the same is no longer adequate. The state of Wisconsin's educational funding has not kept up with the increasing rate of inflation across the state and the nation. By decreasing our district's student capacity, we would decrease operational costs that are driving us towards the deficit. Doing so would allow more funding to go towards students and staff, the actual people of our schools, rather than only the buildings. By combining schools and making larger buildings, the district would be creating more efficient buildings. Our overall goal is to reduce the operational costs spent on our buildings by 10% to decrease the expected deficit.
Thank you, Viva. So now I get a chance to talk to us a little bit about the process. So the 26 of us convened in this past January of '23, but the work started a full year earlier. ATS R, which is the firm that has led a lot of the data gathering for us, they started back in January of 2022. So it was a full year of going through each and every one of our 42 buildings and looking at every space. As Reed mentioned in his opening comments, there were two specific things they were looking for. They were looking at the physical assessment for each building. What is that physical condition that each building is at? What are going to be the big drivers in terms of costs that are coming up in the next 10, 20, 30 years in each one of those buildings? And also, we're looking at educational adequacy. So given the space that's in each one of these schools, how conducive is that to learning? We know a lot more today than we did in the 1930s, 1950s, 1970s, when many of these buildings were built, about how to arrange physical spaces to really help students learn. And so we looked at the ATS R, looked at each one of our buildings to say, "How much does that actually support learning in each one of our areas?" So this is not an actual picture of any one of our buildings. We do not share maps of any one of our buildings, but it gives you a feeling for the type of assessment that was done of every room in each one of our buildings, going through and looking at the HVAC, our heating and venting and air conditioning systems, looking at the roofs, looking at the security, looking at the doors, looking at the windows, really trying to go through each of our spaces, understanding the parking lots, understanding the green spaces, and how does each one of those, right, and each one of them got assigned, are they in a good condition, medium condition, or are they in need of repair? So you'll see the yellow, the red, and the green. And then we took that information, actually ATS R took that information for the visual learners of us. We saw it on the picture. And then for the spreadsheet, folks, we now put it into the spreadsheet so that you can actually then total up and understand for each one of these how much for our elementary schools, how much for our high schools, and how much for our middle schools, and then our other alternative schools, how much is going to be required to maintain or to get those facilities up to speed, as well as looking at the medium priority items, and there are the high priority items. So really taking all of that information and slicing and dicing it so that we could understand the effects at each one of those levels as well as the urgency of each one of those areas that needed to be improved. Is it a high priority or a medium priority? And then going through very similarly to what they did to look at the facilities, looking at the educational adequacy schools. So looking at the size of the rooms, looking at where there was opportunity for small teamwork, looking at where is their light and an opportunity for natural light coming into each of the spaces. So you can see that type of assessment and how that was done, you know, the placement of the rooms as well, and then the space for the teacher space as well, making sure that is there both a gym and a place, a cafeteria for students to eat. So really trying to put those two scores together. So they were able to come up for each one of ours. We then took that picture representation, put it into the spreadsheet, and were able to come up with that educational analysis matrix that went by school, by area. What are all of those areas of improvement that we could see? Then for each of the schools that you have, we were able to put together a combined analysis. So both from a facility structure as well as from an educational adequacy standpoint, where did each one of those schools fit? So as you go through and you look at our recommendation, we will be referencing those scores and how those scores helped impact decisions that were being made in terms of which schools really met well with the facilities index and which ones met well with the educational index. So our work then, after all of that work by ATS R, we were meeting from January through April. As they've mentioned, we had eight meetings, 26 different people. Each time, it was either about Each time it was either about two to three hours in time. We had a chance to do site visits at Baird, which was mentioned as one of the most recent schools that's been built in our area. As well as Eisenhower, which had a recent update, an addition added to it, which really addressed a lot of those educational. Adequacy challenges. So we got a chance to see how that, that new update, how that addition. Really was able to focus on adequacy as well. And then we met in the beautiful historic library at West High School. And that was a chance to see their facilities and the work that they've done. Starting from the beginning, we had twelve different options that were in front of us. So understanding with those options, looking at how each one met the facilities index and met the educational adequacy. And tried to understand what would be the opportunities with each option. The other thing that was very helpful is that we had a community survey. So the district put out, I think it was between like our, between our fifth and sixth meeting, right around there. A survey to all of the parents and all of our constituents. So that really helped guide us in understanding where were people's priorities. As we mentioned, the river really is no longer the dividing line in terms of population. How do people feel about that? Those were the type of results that were very helpful for us in understanding. And it was really much about precipi- a very participatory as well as consensus building process. In the background, so while we were focused on facilities as our task force. In the background, the administration and others were helping pull together demographic information and the finance information. As well as looking at how might this affect things like boundaries? And really importantly, they were looking at with all the programming that occurs across all these different buildings. How do we still look to maintain those programming options? And how can we continue to maximize equity even as we look at trying to get a better footprint that could be more cost effective? So you know, the administrative resources continued in the background to do that as well as provide information to our community. That was a key part of making sure that folks knew as we were meeting, helping them understand our process. The options that we're looking at, trying to post that information. So nothing is happening in a vacuum here. And helping them understand where we were headed.
All right, next up is our drivers, which are in no particular order. These were the main points of, of what drove our conversations and how we got to our consensus. However, these were not the, the sole reasons. All right, first up is our four K through eight, eighth grade schools. These models were very popular in the community survey. Sixty percent of the community supported adding a four K through eight. School in the Alaway area and or on the east side. And along with this fifty-four, fifty-four percent of the community supported adding a four K through eight on the west side. The four K through eight model creates fewer transitions for students. It also addresses transportation struggles for families that have kids that are an age gap if you have elementary kids and a middle school age kid. Redsmith and Aldo Leopold have already given us positive K through eight feedback. And reaching out to the Racine School District, they have provided positive feedback after implementing K through eights. They'd improved student behavior and student retention. Most of the private and charter schools in our area are K through eight. And in the Green Bay area schools, all these schools would include four K. Are at the new west side elementary. The, this school on the west side would provide one new, larger, more efficient building to replace three of the elementaries. And allow them to create one new identity on the west side. The west side elementary will use the prior Kennedy site since it is the only site that is big enough to suit a new elementary school. This new school provides equity in the district as the new Baird Elementary is built on the east side and open for the twenty nineteen, twenty at school year. Right. As stated previously, crossing the river is not the only reason, the only divider. But it is the biggest divider in Green Bay, which is the Fox River. However, current and projected enrollment numbers show a decline on both sides of the river. We realized in our conversations, having school and bus traffic going across the bridges with possible ships or trains going by, this may not be ideal. But ultimately, for the most efficient fulfillment of the schools, it is necessary to move high school and some middle school students westward. To smooth enrollment throughout the district. Moving kids westward will open up space on the east side schools for potential growth with east side development. The community survey asked if folks supported moving the boundaries from the river as the dividing line. And overall, the response was forty-five, forty-five percent positive and forty percent negative. In our recommendation, only moving high school students across the river had a sixty percent positive response and only twenty-seven percent negative. The river has been a fast and hard border for schools, which resulted in disproportionate student populations between east and west Green Bay. With the Prebble district having an overcrowding problem, this is somewhat being relieved with the current renovations. However, there are still plenty more open seats on the west side. By ultimately moving the boundaries westward, the empty seats at southwest and west and even east can be filled, which gives Prebble additional room for potential growth. All right, West High School, why a focus? West High School is one of the biggest topics among our conversations due to the fact that they had the lowest enrollment among the high schools. We studied a lot of alternative aside from being a high school, which were middle school, four K through eight, K through twelve and six through twelve. West was our linchpin for the rest of our decisions, acting as a trickle down effect. Whatever we chose to do with West was going to affect the rest of our decisions. The, the decisions with West dictated the decisions with the middle schools and K through eights and ultimately our elementary school decisions. We came to the consensus that keeping West as a high school, but current projected enrollments show that the district would be best served with three high schools. All right, keeping West as a high school. To fill the West High School building closer to capacity, our consensus was to add J D O L, the project-based charter school. And a portion of the D O B, along with keeping high school students in the building. Students will move westward from Prebble, from Prebble to east, east to west and west to southwest to better fill southwest and west. Ultimately, these transitions will better fill southwest and west, but also open up room in Prebble to address current overcrowding. Which are partially being solved with the current renovations.
Now maybe we should just take a breath. Not that that was a lot of information. But to get to the fun part, a lot of people say my definition of fun may seem a little off. But just to reiterate what Reid said, it's important that we act now. So this recommendation was consensus based. And it pushes us to say, we need, we need, something needs to change. I did want to tell a little story because, you know, as we went through this process, I was not unaffected by emotions. To, I do live in the Green Bay area and I do travel to Boygan for work, but nevertheless, you know, I live very, very close to Beaumont Elementary. I am currently, knock on wood, still, I'm thirty-five weeks pregnant. So you know, I had this vision of walking my child to school. I can spoiler alert say this recommendation closes Beaumont. That was hard to reconcile as this, as a, you know, a new mother that I wouldn't have that opportunity. But I knew what was important for the community as a whole needed to be done. So I guess I'll have to walk a little further. But the, the other piece of it is, is that. How we came to this consensus, it, it does not describe, there's nothing with boundaries in here, it's solely just that facilities and educator, educational adequacy. So I wanted to bring that up again, so we understood what that basis and I think Reid spoke to it clearly as I get to the later slides. About why we considered closing a building. So I just wanted to prep everybody for that. So this recommended option. It closes or repurposes twelve buildings. And obviously, as Sawyer had described, this adds also a new west side elementary. Three of our schools become repurposed as four K through eights and that's Franklin, Langley and McCullough. West also stays as that high school, adding in that J D O L and a portion of the district office building. Another pieces is Manoka Hill would be moving to Lincoln and DaVinci moves to Webster. And then as well, you know, a lot of this is fluid, so a portion of the district office, the other half, the fun half. Would move to another, you know, building within our current structure. So if you can tell from these very tiny pictures, this is our recommendation, that recommendation number, what was it, twelve, everybody? So in here, what, what I love about this is you can really kind of, anybody who has it out there, you can kind of follow along. So you'll see some like student movement, so you'll see new projections on there that they show what are, you know, what enrollment will be. What enrollment could be, moving students here, the, the red is closing of our buildings. And just kind of seeing that placement. So it kind of gives Jill and I are very spreadsheety people. So this was fun for us. The maps that are coming along the way may, show you a little bit more what the transition would actually look like. But the main thing to take from this was kind of reading that key, it's very, very important. You're going to see that movement of students westward. And then you'll see, in order to make that happen, what do we need? So anything, anytime you saw that kind of lock and key, we need more security. And, and some, some of that envelope needs to be done to secure those buildings. If you see a little basketball, I'm very glad it was a basketball. So thank you, ATS R. That is the addition of a gym and it with the, the, I believe the little computers, what was that one again? Thank you, district office. So like different things you, you, we, we can do here. And any little brick was saying, hey, you know, we're going to add these students. So either it's going to be obviously until that new elementary down at the bottom. Or we need to add to, to really grab that capacity for, for all of our kids. So. That's kind of just the, the fun little schematic version of what this is. There we go. So I, what was really exciting is we were given a task, oddly, a task force given a task. So our biggest thing was that ten percent. I'm happy to say that we exceeded that. This recommendation is fifteen percent in savings for operational costs. And we, I, I was going to say like, look how dramatically different it is. It's. It's showing you on the, the, what our baseline, again, if we would stay where we're at right now. That one to the left is where our total tenure operational costs would be. Our right is the savings that you would see. Including that new west side elementary and all that movement and in keeping West as a high school. So Viva luckily had this map as well. So this is our current state, as you can see, right in that middle, like where that river is, right? We, we kind of get a little jumbled. We kind of have a lot of, a lot of buildings. And then you can also see like Week We Ak, Redsmith, you got, we also have some, and Doty. We have some outliers. So as it, we, we did take that into consideration as a task force as we're moving forward. But I just really wanted to reiterate this visual of what our current state is. This would be the final recommended map. And so you can kind of see the pressure was alleviated on that riverside. But also kind of composed, so you, Redsmith obviously still out there, but the, that we were no longer condensed. In that, in that middle portion, because as we've all noted multiple times, the river is no longer the enrollment divider and even our population divider. And then finally. These are our closures of, and you'll, you'll see, you might say, hey, Manoka didn't close. It's just saying, you know, that building is no longer used in that purpose, same thing as J D O L. J D O L is no longer in that building, but they did get moved. But you can kind of see now where we've alleviated the pressure and where we've moved our students. So this is a, also a really fun little, little graphic for us. It, it's kind of what that, what the feeder. School schema, oh, I shouldn't say schema, options look like. And essentially it's showing like where would my child go? So I think we'll be, it's the easiest thing to explain are kind of the splits. You can see Franklin would become that K, four K through eight. So Franklin would, would go from that elementary, middle, high school. So that middle layer there is kind of that. Six through eight, the bottom is four K through five and the top, obviously, we could categorize high school, but nine, nine through twelve. So you can kind of see where they're, where they're going to go. Again, the, this was just provided for the, you know. Josh did a great job of providing this information based off of the data that they currently have. But you know, the, these are just projections that they feel they're going to go this way. So I would direct any questions to Josh on this, just going to reiterate that. In regards to how the patterns were, were specifically. Made. So kind of just going back to what Reid said. Adaptability, capacity and location. Say that one more time. Adaptability, capacity and location factors as to why. We closed or repurposed a building. Okay, so what you'll see, the, the, what I'm going to go through, there's going to be very similar terms. We're going to go back to seeing that facility condition index, F C I, we're going to go seeing educational adequacy, E A. Those were main things you'll see as to reasons as to why a building was closed or why a building was repurposed. But the main point was to improve overall utilization. Because improving overall utilization gives us the opportunity to create more efficient and effective educational environments for students. And that was probably the biggest piece of it. You know, it's really easy to see when you see those, what Jill was talking about, those diagrams of each building. Buildings with low F C I and E A, those are hard buildings to maintain. Forget about, forget about even having the kids in there. It's just hard buildings to maintain operationally and keep them running. And so there was a lot of things that generally really impacted us. And as we're going to follow, like, we'll, I'll show you, we'll show you specific reasons as to why a building was closed or repurposed. And now I realize I'm really talking with my hands. I feel like Ricky Bobby from Talladega Nights. Rationale for closing a building. I warned everybody, I was a very sarcastic individual, I was still selected, so we all get to enjoy this as much as I am Beaumont. So this was, there, like, we said, there was a lot of fluidity and, and pieces where things would be moving. So Beaumont is also an option for possibly a district off, portion of the district office going. But as you can see, bringing back the point, that F C I and that E A score were kind of in the middle. And it really did not improve the overall utilization. The additions and the space did not facilitate to that. And quite honestly, Annie Jackson is very, very close. So it was more preferable based on the fact that there were more investments, had larger and it ended up being more efficient. DaVinci, so as brought up previous, is one of our oldest buildings. Has, it, it just, it's not conducive for an educational environment. And I think that's the easiest way to kind of summarize kind of the rationale for this. The small site, there's very little green space. The, the way to get to a playground, you know, that it's, it's not, there's not a lot of, that's not safe. Again, needed some additions, does not have the full sized L, L M C, the library media center. And really, those cannot be fixed in the current space. So that's thus the recommendation of moving DaVinci into Webster. Because it was a bigger, better building and site as it has more square footage for that to support DaVinci. Doty, so again, proximity, location was close to Langley, it's at the edge of the district. And we just felt that it, what, overall, when we looked at overall utilization, it didn't, it didn't meet that standard. Elmore, we'll go back to age, that educational adequacy and you know, to, to put into that, to get down my little rabbit hole that I love to go down sometimes. As, as has been, been mentioned before, the money that we invest, would that it be, would have been a good investment to put more into educational adequacy? For an older building. I think those are being things that we've taken into consideration. So going back to adaptability. So again, overall utilization, not really meeting it. Keller, very low, though you got a couple of things, low enrollment, low scores. Not meeting that standard that we set regarding utilization. Kennedy, low scores, the needs to fix it for that F C I, for that, just the facilities. Again, this is even talking about educational adequacy. Very expensive, their needs, the, again, adding because of how, what, what current state is, we just felt that it really wasn't. Put, to put money into it, rather, it was the size that could accommodate a new elementary school with a capacity of eight hundred and sixty. So combining those three buildings again, as mentioned previously. MacArthur. We're, we're, we're kind of seeing a trend here, right? We're seeing that low F C I, F C I, E A scores. Things aren't repairable. The biggest thing for, for this one, for MacArthur was where it sits with that underground water table running through the property. And that being a major concern and not the investment in that would have just been. Too much to maintain MacArthur. Tank. Again, adding, being an older building, even though there was investments in the nineties, still needing a gym and having those low scores and a low enrollment. Not, not meeting the standard by which we would have pushed forward as a, as a committee. Week We Ak, there's a low enrollment and I think the, the big thing to note here. And I do enjoy being a director of business services to be able to talk about that impact of the one class per grade. You know, it becomes expensive as well to run a one class per grade school. So as I noted, it's a higher operating cost per student. So if we, we can go down a different rabbit hole, talking about educational equity through finances. And this WikiArt can be a little bit on the, on the iffy side, but the main thing, I think to take away from it is that the septic system limits us. We can't really expand and as a result, that limits the enrollment capacity. So if our plan is to grow, we should, we need to have a building that allows for that. And then obviously, as we saw, it was the furthest on the edge of that district. Washington, no, I think the major things here, again, building age, the cost of the repairs. And the fact that longer term, it's going to have more of that. And the fact that longer term, it's going to have more of that envelope exterior repair needs. But I think a big one as well, when you look at what educational adequacy calls for is not having more green space. That's really big now, having that opportunity for students to learn outside and experience outside. As I would say Baird, oh, right, Baird was beautiful. I mean, the the windows and the light and the net, the the fact that they have those learning areas outside. That's the sort of things we're looking for. And so buildings and schools that didn't have the opportunity to grow in that area, you know, kind of were impacted by this. Manoka Hill, again, no green space. There's no gym, as we know, it's a former office space and recommended relocating to Lincoln. It just felt like it was a better building for that. District Office, so this wonderful building. Obviously, there's a there's a lot of potential, not any of our decisions to make, but there's potential. It's also an older building. It does have some of that facility, high facilities needs. And again, you know, we think we talked a lot about as a committee, and it was really good to hear from our students. Was, you know, people should be in the buildings like if you're, if you're on the curriculum and instruction side, you should be in a building. You should be around there, you know, you don't always get the opportunity. And I will say operations is great. And they could be with kids too. We got to remember who we're serving, but that's fine. I'm all right. But overall, it was important to note that it did not meet those standards. I mean, obviously, there's no students being really serviced here. So now moving to the repurposing. And again, I'm going to reiterate the the three, the three factors. What were those again, Reid?
You know.
Giving, giving a little. Quick, throw him over. And you know, adaptability, capacity and location. Okay, those are the major, major ones. And so when we're looking at Franklin, we're repurposing that as a four K through eight, because it can do that without an addition. And I think that's a big, that's a big thing to note, that the building is big enough that we can allow for this environment to be to be had in that building. And honestly, it does improve our overall utilization. Jada, obviously, it's an option for, again, that that's one of the fluid pieces, right? An option for a portion of the district office. It was, it was a former office building. There isn't anything, you know, needed. It's just we, what we felt was moving Jada out of that office building into West High School really allowed those students to flourish. Because they could now have access to those specialty spaces that we've invested in both West and East, well, mainly at West. But and you know, it would give them access to more things than they have now. And we felt that was really, really important because the work that the staff and the students do at jail is really, really important. Lincoln, again, there was in its current state, low enrollment. It did have recent improvements and repurposing that from Manoka Hill does improve overall utilization. And for the, for the purpose of the student and the population and access, it is close to a bus line. So we felt that that would maybe eliminate some of the barriers to student and, you know, staff and in family success and involvement. Webster, so this would be repurposed as Da Vinci. Now, this one does is is an old middle, middle aged, I'll say it's a middle aged, our middle aged building with recent additions. It has really good classroom sizes because I don't know if we remember back on the why we closed Da Vinci, small classrooms wasn't really facilitating that educational adequacy. And for repurposing Webster, really, because it's in good condition, it does have some envelope exterior repairs. But overall, it has the room to grow. So while we say it needs a gym addition to facilitate those needs, it has the room to do that. And for the purpose of allowing Da Vinci to thrive in it on its own, we've, the ATS R felt Webster was a good option. And I'm done now. Thank you.
Well, I think you can probably see why I went first because this would have been a tough act to follow. But I do get get to put some closure to it. If you take a look at the future plan, I think it's, it's important to know. And I made a note of what Dick had mentioned. This district has been in existence for 210 years. And it seems like change has been the cornerstone of those 210 years. It's inevitable. And it seems like the lately change has been pretty slow to happen. The boundary, boundaries, particularly because of the river. And a recommendation from the task force would be then to review the boundaries every four to six years. And I'd like to lean on my favorite historical figure, Winston Churchill. When he said that to improve is to change, to be perfect is to change often. And you need to look, you need to look at those things probably a little bit more often than you have lately. So that would be a recommendation. And there again, you've heard it from several us here on this panel that something has to be done. And looking at the fiscal cliff in 2425 and the recommendation that we had or the task that we had are coming up with a 10% budget, operational budget cut. I think this is a step forward and something that the board is going to have to make some real tough decisions going forward. And this is a path to those tough decisions to. I like to commend the board too on the transparency that we've had as a committee. You know, it's been in the paper, the meetings have been open. It's been on the website. Everything has been out in the open. And but there's a lot of work to do. And I know the district's going to have those table top discussions coming up in next two evenings. I hope the community gets out and participates. And there again, people have to understand that ours is a recommendation. Ultimately, you as a board, after you decipher all this and go through it and make those final decisions. But we really think as a committee that these recommendations with a lot of hard work and a lot of examination and were positively for the district. And we also recognize that change is hard. We talked about that at every meeting, change is hard. But you're going to have to make those changes somewhere down the line. You're going to have to make those tough decisions. And I guess some closing. Well, I'll read this. As I mentioned earlier, the task force recognizes change is hard. The comments and questions forthcoming will no doubt be centered on why my school. Parents and children grow to love their schools and their teachers. The board should consider these comments and concerns as a reflection of the many things that are right and positive about GB APS. With a goal of providing a learning environment that is better for every child in the district. Those feelings can be renewed regardless of the physical site. An educational home is provided by the environment created, not the location. The board will now have the opportunity to digest, study and act on moving forward. As mentioned earlier, this status quo and doing nothing is not an option, considering the budget restraints projected in the future. The task force supports the board as they make the tough decisions necessary, knowing that an enhanced school environment for every student is a goal. With that, we thank you.
Well, thank you. You guys have, and there's many people from the task force in the audience here. You have discharged your duties and then some. I mean, I, I couldn't be happier with what I witnessed with my own eyes at these meetings. And I just know it's been hard. It's we understand, we are acutely aware that this is going, these changes are are going to bring loss for some of our families and a sense of grieving. But the urgency, and you guys spoke very, very eloquently to this, the urgency to change is something that we, we can't avoid. And I am, I'm just incredibly grateful to all that served. A lot of people said no to us when we were trying to pull together this task force. And, and you guys said yes and stepped up and did this job. And I can't be more grateful to you. So I don't know if anybody else on the board would like to add anything to that. Okay, with that, we're going to, I think we're going to go on to questions. And I think we're going to have the ATS and our folks come on up to the table and help us with those. I'm not saying we won't maybe ask you all to, to, should we have some, some stay at the table? Do we have space for everybody? Okay, please stay and then we'll, we'll make some space for y'all.
This is operations work session, correct? So it's LW.
We never, that was done. Yeah, so she is. What's that? I'm the chair, I guess I'll do it now. So, um, all right, everyone get cozy. It's been a while since I saw that many people at our board table, though. But you all bring, you all bring your point of view and your professional expertise. And you know, the folks at AT from ATS and R have been at this work for months and months, as, as the test verse noted. So they have a depth of knowledge and understanding about our, our individual schools and our, our district as a whole. That is pretty unrivaled, except for maybe Josh. So would you folks, please go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Okay, thank you, ma'am chair, and thank you board for inviting us and for letting us participate in the, in the work that we did. And then while working along these magnificent task force members, because it was a great experience. Well, thank you. I'm Chuck Holden with ATS N R. Nancy.
Nancy La Bissinere with ATS R.
And I'm Pete Lacy with ATS R.
Okay. Okay, so everyone take a breath. And I'm going to assume that our board is, has questions. And I'll recognize anyone who would like to start off. Go ahead, Lynn. Yes, please.
First, I'd like to tell you, I thought that was an excellent presentation. I went to all the facilities task force meetings, but I didn't always get to hear what you were saying. And thank you, that was really, really helpful. I did, I just missed it. I think you said it, but I missed it. What did you say is the planned use for the Jada building once it's no longer a school?
You know, it was one of the fluid pieces that was mentioned, right? And I think it's that first slide when we were talking about repurposing in the, in the recommendation, which was there was some fluidity with where the district office was going to go. And so you would, you'd notice there was Beaumont was a, was a possibility. Jada was a possibility. And then there was some other infusing, obviously, like at West High School. So the purpose of, you know, when we move Jada, there was a possibility from that recommendation that the district office could, could go there.
Yes, please.
As part of this work, one of the next steps is going to be to put together a disposition plan for all the properties that end up vacated. So if, if the current, the current building at seven on one Cherry Street is empty, we'll either sell it or keep it or, or do something with it. But we need a disposition plan for each and everyone. So it is my intention after the board gives us direction on the basis of this task force recommendation to, to get together a disposition plan for these properties.
Okay, so that answers my next question, which was going to be, have you figured out where all the administrative offices will go? And the answer is no. That's coming next. You said that, right?
That's coming next. The, there is plenty of space, though, obviously, with 12 buildings being vacated and a number of empty seats on the west side.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to thank you for, you know, focusing especially on the, the physical layout of the building, the charge that you're given with that. I've said this before, this is an opportunity, this is a once in a generation opportunity for us to improve the education for all of our students and the equity on there. And I really appreciate the quote, and I hope I don't, don't misquote that quote that I appreciate. Talking about each school has improved educational opportunities. And that's a huge, huge plus for us. And I appreciate you including that in the presentation with that.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I'm going to camp on and thank you as well for your, your work. And I also want to thank you for orienting your presentation around the guidance that the board gave at the beginning and making sure that you kind of connected with what we were looking for in a presentation. One thing I was interested in, I think someone said that you had access to financials. One of the guidance areas was, you know, you know, respecting that in these recent investments from referendum. No one wants to spend money and then not see the value from that. Oh, Josh, do they have access to like the capital spend or something on the buildings as part of their?
We didn't prepare any documents that contained recent capital spend, but administration was available because we did know that this was a guiding principle from the board. So as options came up, we would remind them, hey, in 2017, you know, X happened or 2012 X happened.
So it was just in conversation and as part of the deliberation.
Sorry, didn't need to do that. Keep going.
Correct.
I, one other portion that, that it does show up in, there's a building age diagram in on the facilities assessment side in that the, the group saw. And then it shows us all the various ages. So every time there was an addition, you know, 90s or whenever that was, that all shows up. So the investments from an addition standpoint showed up in the documentation in the reports.
And, and also the, the recent work that you did on things like the, the media centers across the district. When we are going around, we were able to notice that and see the impact that it had made on the buildings that we visited as well.
Can I just make a request? Josh, can you try to use the other microphone? The other one is a little bit quiet and I want people to be able to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So this is a question for you, Josh. Just to be clear, because I heard a lot of this from the community over the last few months. You are confident that the referendum that we passed last November is there's no conflict between those expenditures, those commitments and what is being planned in this plan?
Turn me off. And no, that's okay. For the most part, the November of 22 referendum, there is no conflict with this. There were some smaller projects. For instance, I think, you know, there was a new roof plan for Washington as part of that November referendum. So obviously, this recommendation has Washington closing. We wouldn't be going forward with that. We would be reallocating that to other projects.
Okay, along with James said that you had some financials and then you said you had some demographics. Like a lot or not really? Like I thought that was going to come later when we're doing other things. But did you take a lot of that into, you know, consideration?
I want to comment on that slide. I, because that slide was more representative of the work that was happening concurrently by the district. So we were, Angie gave a one thing, Angie, it was wonderful presentation on financials. It was riveting for me. So we were given a lot of information regarding the fiscal status of the district. But that slide, that I think it was the GB APS support was more in reference and in line with the work that was happening concurrently by GPAP. So we, I can speak to us, we did not directly see demographic data because that was not a factor or, as Sawyer said, a driver for our decision. But the GPAP, so that when you, when you see that slide again, that was the work that was happening concurrently to help drive ATS R's decisions and influence the recommendations that we saw.
Go ahead, Josh.
So the, the task force was provided with for each school, the, the current demographics. As far as future demographics on the basis of boundary changes that obviously need to happen when you're consolidating schools. That would be a part of the next step. You know, once we get the, once we get the direction from the board, we'll convene a boundary task force to really dig into the weeds there. And I, I think that's even present within the, the board directives to the task force, right? As little disruption as possible. That would be something that boundary task force would be looking at. Does it make sense demographically? Are we keeping neighborhoods together? What's the impact on transportation? All of those kind of things happen in the next phase now that we've settled, now that we will have settled into, into like, I guess, a, an endpoint there.
Vicki, did you want to add any? Vicky, did you want to add anything?
I was just gonna reiterate exactly what Josh said, the focus of the task force was to be strictly on the brick and mortar. We didn't want them to lose sight of that, now, the next phase, after getting direction from the Board of Education, we'll delve more into the demographics.
Thank you, Brian.
And following up on the, the brick and mortar focus, we've received a lot of questions and concerns, specifically with DaVinci. Can you elaborate a bit more on the, the numbers that we've had from that and the reasoning behind the proposal for DaVinci and moving to Webster, and just clarify for the audience and the board, just a little bit more in depth on that.
As was mentioned in the task force report, in looking at DaVinci, there's a lot of small classrooms where it's difficult to get a, a full class in there, so in, in some of those rooms, they're restricted on how, how big those classes can be, and then some of the other factors that we were considering was the difficulty of getting to green space out there. And it's a very constrained site, so there's no opportunities in the future to add on, to add some of the things that would be neat, would normally be seen in a school such as gymnasium. Do you want to talk more about the facility?
And, as you probably know, and as he mentioned, the, the building was a former convent and a church, so if you think about, you know, what a convent would have been designed for, you know, which would be rooms for people to, to stay in those kind of things versus the size of a classroom. Right, so that's kind of, and, and so, yes, it's small intimate class sizes, but even though the number of classrooms may be not that much more because you have larger classroom sizes, more to normal sizes, if that school moves there and they choose to increase to normal district class sizes, they could increase their enrollment to some degree, so, so that's kind of, it's a subtlety, but it's an important one, I think, to understand. And then, because the square footage is larger, it's a, I want to say, I can't remember the percentage now, twenty-some percent larger overall. And they, and we do have the room at Webster, at Webster, to move to Webster, yes, and they, at DaVinci, they don't have that full-sized media center, library space, there is a very nice one over at Webster that was recently redone. So that's what would be an advantage to them, and I think even down the road, besides the room right now for a gym addition, if there were a desire to do another addition to that building to further increase the capacity of DaVinci, that would be an option at the Webster site. It's not an option at the current DaVinci, DaVinci site, there's nowhere to go anywhere there, so from, from a longer-term standpoint, this is one of those things where we look at the physical building, again, the physical space and what's available and what the potentials are there versus the potential that you have at that existing DaVinci building, yes, of course, there's been investments there. But when you look at where you can go with the one building versus where you can go with the other, it was, from our standpoint, it was clear that DaVinci long-term would be better to move to, to Webster and invest a little in Webster and allow that to make best use of that program.
Brian, okay, James.
So, yeah, I've, like, Brian, received, all of us have received this kind of feedback, and when I look at the problem set, there is, I can, I can kind of distill it down to, it was very formulaic, and FCI and the educational adequacy scoring ratio, until we got to a couple of different of these facilities, and then it moved to nuanced reasons why you want to do that, so it becomes problematic, right, because we want to be fair to everyone, and when you look at that particular building, it's old. And it's in fantastic shape, right, so we need to make sure that as we look at it, if, that's why I asked for financials, because I do want to take into consideration investment, and I do want to take into consideration that we want a uniform evaluation of all of the different, you know, aspects of this plan, and when I see this kind of feedback, it's when I kind of notice a divergence from that standard evaluation that kind of leads to these kind of questions, so I appreciate the nuance, and having been in the school, recognize some of what you're saying. But I, I know also why we're getting that kind of feedback as well.
I would really like to have like a timeline here, like, I know we have a special session on June fifth, what is going to be decided? How much work do we have to have done by that day?
That is a great question. The board can make multiple decisions. You could have a motion to accept this recommendation in its entirety. You could make a motion to tackle some of the easy ones that wouldn't be dependent on referendum. You could make a motion to direct us as a district office team to begin exploration of the other options. It's, it's really up to the board, but I would remind the board, any of the decisions that you make also impact the budget deficit, and if we don't make big decisions here, then we have to start taking a look at staffing. So, I hope that's helpful, Nancy.
It is, but when will we find out about the financial cliff for sure, I mean, you know, I know it has to do with the state budgets and things like that, but, you know.
That's why chunking it out might be the option the board would want to consider. As Angie has shared, we probably won't have word about state budget until the school year is already begun. September, October. Keeping in mind, though, the school, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year will really be about planning or implementation.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. Couple of questions here, first one is for, for Josh, are all of the, are all of the building capacities now GBAP's numbers as opposed to the, the twenty-five, just multiply the classroom by twenty-five, which certainly had a point early in the process?
Yeah, those schemas, the, you're referring to the schema that you're seeing there, the capacities are, there are from ATS and R, they did tighten them up a little bit. I provided, provided a document to the board comparing the, I get the capacities that our facilities department uses, it, it's about a, a delta of about two to two and a half percentage points.
Is, in the process of that, did, did overall AGR numbers get included somehow?
Pete can answer that.
Yes, they did, yeah, so we initially started the project, or the, the analysis using that twenty-five students per classroom just for the elementary schools, when we're looking at the middle schools and the high schools, we did bring in the data from the master schedules and work out the capacity and utilization from that aspect. Once we got settled down on to what was likely direction that we were going with the scheme, as we did then bring in the AGR numbers, because then we could, could see which schools would be impacted by that more easily, so yes, the numbers that we have on the, the option that we have on the handout incorporate those reductions in, in, in some of the schools like DaVinci, because it does have some smaller classroom sizes, we did reduce the number there as well, and some of the classrooms are not used as classrooms like we were expecting them to be, so that number did reduce from what we originally had, and then AGR was incorporated into the appropriate schools in that regards.
Just one more for now. And if, if, if the answer here is that, if the answer is that my question is programmatic and therefore for the board's stage of things, that's, that's okay. But I will just point out that something programmatic was mentioned about my question before, so with, with regards to, there's a couple, couple things I'm wondering about with, with J D A L being moved into West, so I know people and families who have, I know plenty of families who have chosen J D A L because primarily of project-based learning. I also know plenty of people who have gone through J D A L because of a more intimate learning space, smaller, a smaller overall learning community. Probably more of the latter than the, the former, but there's certainly both. Certainly to put, I, I guess, did, and if, if that wasn't, if that wasn't considered that much, because that's more programmatic, that's, that's okay, but mentioning that there would be access to different extra things and more spaces within West, that, that's programmatic too. So yes, if you could talk about that, and then another side thing about J D A L is, while J D A L's charter doesn't currently offer that, an expansion that could go up to three hundred five, it, it certainly couldn't expand to, if they wanted to look at a charter to go much beyond what they have, that probably wouldn't work inside of West, so those are my two J D A L questions, and then I'll stop there.
So, in the, when we were considering J D A L moving into West, and when we were doing the costing for that, we do have costing within the West project to do alterations within West to create an identity for J D A L. Because certainly that would be important, right, there's an identity there, and, and particular needs to their program that would need to be incorporated and accommodated, so that was taken into consideration, that would be certainly part of, of that aspect is creating an identity for J D A L within West, because we understand that was part of the reason why they, we were told that was part of the reason why they moved where they did, that they were originally a part of in another building and they wanted their own identity. So that would certainly be a part of the, of the process, would be to create an identity for J D A L within the Western environment. And, and I should say, both J D A L and DaVinci, being, they don't have set boundaries, right, that their, their enrollment anywhere, those are the more flexible pieces of the plan, really, along with the district office, which is different, so if the decision is J D A L should stay where it is, potentially more of the district office could move into West, right? You know, there's different things that could happen there, the, the hope, I think, of the task force was to try to obviously make better use of West's capacity, but there's different ways that that could be accommodated, so those, those pieces that are the open enrollment or boundary list, I'm not using the right term, but you know what I'm saying, have, those have a little more flexibility. More of the rest of the buildings, it's very interconnected, right, when you, when you, when we close one of them, that affects those kids moving there, which affects this, you know, and it's all, as you can see in the, in the option diagram, it's a very interconnected piece, but those two other buildings have a little more flexibility in what you choose to do with them because they don't have boundaries, and they don't affect, directly feed the way the, the other ones do, so if that helps your flexibility and thought processes, that's something to consider.
Well, and thanks Nancy, and I would just add that there were discussions, at least amongst ATS and R, and some with the task force group as well, that we know that there's students that, that prefer off-site, often normal high school site location, and we talked about separate branding, separate entrance, separation of programs within that, so that was a, that's a possibility at West.
Brian.
Josh, this question's gonna be for you, one of the great things about Green Bay area schools is that just the, the sheer economy of size, we have a lot of different offerings from all the way K through twelve, and we have a significant amount of students that intra-district transfer, so for instance, my children will be going to East next year because of the programming there, even though we're in the Preble district, so with this attendance and, and the capacity, that still takes into consideration intra-district transfer and still also, I'm assuming encouraging students from other districts to open enroll in, but looking at the historical data for intra-district students, we'll still be able to do that, correct?
Yes, both with respect to intra-district transfer and open enrollment in, well, and out for that matter. Those historical numbers are a part of our enrollment projections, so that is also baked into the plan, because you are seeing on the schema future enrollment projections as well, that's not our current enrollment on that schema, so those projections include assuming that the future will resemble the past with respect to intra-district transfer and open enrollment.
I have a few questions about what's coming next, we've used the word demographics a lot tonight, and it, that's, has such broad meaning. It can mean so many things to different people, like numbers, it can mean ages, it can mean cultural backgrounds. And so I'd like to know, I believe that you said that's gonna come in the next, the boundary setting stage, and so I'd like to know specifically what demographics we're going to be considering, and then also, can, is it too soon to ask for a little idea what that boundary-setting work is gonna look like?
And also looking into consideration the demographics of our district as a whole, so when we're looking at shifting, you know, recognizing the makeup of our district as a whole, everything's going to be impacted on there, so just taking that into consideration as well.
So, I had the pleasure of doing some kind of sanity checks on the task force as they were going along, making sure the boundaries were, were workable. There were actually some, some initial proposals from the ATS and R team, when you went to actually draw it on the map, it just didn't work. Right, and as part of, as part of that exercise, the demographics that I was using to, to test those assumptions were race, socioeconomic status, and then, I guess, something a little more nebulous, which would be neighborhoods, right? We definitely have neighborhoods here in, in Green Bay, and you want to kind of keep those together. Ultimately, though, when we, we convene a boundary task force, which is a recommendation coming out of this, this task force, the board can direct us to consider whichever attributes of students you'd like, as long as we have it in our computers, right? We can, we can look at the balance, and we could compare it to the demographics as a whole in the district, or the demographics of a neighborhood. So, there are any number of ways to go there. Typically, we, when we say demographics, we mean race, and we mean socioeconomic, pre-reduced lunch status.
Please.
So can you, did you say there's going to be another task force, there's going to be a boundary task force, are you talking about bringing members of the community in again, or?
I think that would be a good idea, I guess. That, that's something that the board would need to direct us to do, though. I, I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable drawing the, the boundaries for forty, like thirty schools that are left, or for the next ten to fifteen years, that's all by myself.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Yeah, this would be a good time to point out, Josh has been working his butt off on this, he's committed to hours even beyond what the task force has been doing, both Josh and Lori Blakesley, and it would be, I think, I think it would be the next necessary direction, depending on where the board goes on June fifth, but to direct us to have another task force convene, and it would be a large one, and it would be the group that would help implement whatever plan the board chooses.
But, go ahead, James.
Um, thank you, um, just another point of guidance was how this costs it out, and making sure that the cost of the change was in line with our expectations and what we could manage, and part of that is just making sure that our mail rate stays reasonable, and I've seen on a particular schema, but not on the materials I received tonight, kind of the costing of this particular set of changes, is that available to us?
The, we were looking at overall, we did provide overall costing to the, the group in the process, however, we did not tell them exactly what the exact financial goal However, we did not tell them exactly what the exact financial goal was because we didn't want them, we wanted them to look at what's the best plan for students, right? And do that first and not necessarily saying we're gonna hit this number. It's about what's right for the kids. And so that was the first goal and, and we feel confident as a architectural engineering team that whatever you guys decide, that we can massage to meet the, meet the, the amount that you're looking for. If you choose to go for a referendum, what we did do with the numbers, the last round of the last couple of schemes that we were looking at um, was to, um, and if you, some of you remember when I did the original board presentation on the facility side, I talked about how most districts can't afford all of their facilities needs all at once. It'd be like fixing your entire house perfectly, all in one chunk, just throw, you know what I mean? That's just typically not realistic to be able to afford it all. If you can, it'd be amazing, but it's not really typical to be able to fix absolutely everything. So what we did with the last few times around was, uh, we dropped the medium priority down to, um, the fifty, fifty percent, and we left all the high priority in from on the facility's side. And then we also have educational adequacy, um, or excuse me, we have, um, the additions on there. And then depending upon what you decide, there is additional educational adequacy things that we, that can be plugged in. You know, this part, this kind of fine tuning to what you guys need the number to be will be another part of this process that we're gonna continue to help you with as we move forward here. Once we know where you wanna go and what you wanna hit, right? Then we're gonna be able to fine tune as needed to make sure that we, that you're comfortable with, with, you know, and some of this might be, some of it might be a longer-term plan. You might have a, you know, first tier of work, second tier of work, longer-term priority of work. If you can't afford it all right away and to be able to prioritize what buildings you wanna hit first, which one have the greatest needs, greatest equity needs, all those kind of things. And we'll help you work with that plan to get where you need to be from a financial standpoint. Chuck, I think has a couple of things.
I just, I just wanted to follow up that the slide that was in the presentation showed the operational savings that came from staff. But we can provide, we can provide financials for any, any of these plans that you wanna see. But it wasn't a focus for the task force group.
Yeah, I, I recognize that and I appreciate the, the background of that. And you kind of went where I need to go because, oh, first, um, this is very nice and I appreciate that this was, uh, provided, uh, this evening. On the back, it kind of lays out a timeline and I look at that as a timeline to the first referendum. Is that everyone's understanding, Josh, at all? So we're talking about a planning year, then in the spring of twenty-four, having an initial referendum. And then a planning year or a build-out year and then, um, boundary changes necessary to make, um, make that facility come online in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Is that reasonable?
To have facilities coming online in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would likely need to hit an April referendum. And there are aspects of this, of this plan that cannot happen without a capital referendum. There are parts that can, but most of it can't. When you're talking about building a brand new school, we would, we would have.
Sorry, I hit it too fast. And, and the other thing to note is that that's the twenty-six, twenty-seven at earliest. So, and that would be like if some design and planning started even before the referendum passed. In order to get some work open right after there, you'd have to allow architecture and engineering design work to start prior to the referendum passing. So that's pretty, that's aggressive. So what we're just saying, if you wanna be aggressive, that's the earliest. Some of the biggest things like a new building, that's gonna be even the following year after that. So the point would be referendum. You know, and again, if you wanna push some of that design work in front of that a little bit to get a, a jump on your highest priority work and most likely you'd be, you know, you wanna be working on obviously the things that enable you to make the switch, right? So you have to work on, we gotta get the new building going. We'd have to get the additions going to make the K eights, right? Those big projects would have to get going first and then you kind of follow up with some of the smaller pieces.
So, um, so Josh, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to ultimately is we have a, a timeline that does not equal my definition of now or immediate, right? Just to get to the point where we can make some of these changes, we have to get through a referendum cycle, um, to keep our mail rate stable and what, what is kind of our threshold for borrowing? Um, Angie, if you know off the top of your head, I, I don't see us or in the past having committed to a referendum large enough to build a new building and modify two or three others at once, right? So there's not a real option of do everything now on the table. Is that a reasonable fact? And keep our mail rate where it is.
I mean, we could do a three hundred million dollar referendum and keep our mail rate flat, um, based on our current projections. The way we have debt retiring.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I just wanted to follow up on what James said. If there's anybody, um, who did not get this, Lori, this is wonderful. Um, and I hope whoever, whoever did this, yes, I, this is a good summary. They're out on the table. Please make sure you get one.
I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the task force and for the students that are on it. Kudos to you. This is one of those great resume builders. That you can take with you. And so thank you. Um, also the piece about the demographics, what I'm most interested in is, um, we use the word equity a lot. Um, but I'd like to know that there are certain groups that are not disproportionately negatively affected by the decisions that we make. And I understand that, um, all of that's gonna have to be taken into consideration, but I appreciate the work you did in, in bringing forward, um, looking at everything the best that you could and considering the bricks and mortar, but that's something that I'll be interested in looking at forward personally. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I, I couldn't agree more and it's something we've been discussing since the beginning of this project. We recognize that that is a concern and it is a concern for us as well. So as we go through the boundary work, we'll be sure to provide updates to the Board of Education. So we're fulfilling your wishes.
I would just like to add to, um, our hope is that no student is adversely affected. Right, right? Um, let alone subgroups of students. You know, our goal here is when all is said and done, kids end up in a, in a, a better facility and having more opportunities than they would have had, um, before these changes are made. Um, and I also wanna add, as, as we begin to do these demographic studies with respect to boundaries, you know, it, it, we may need some value statements or, or something from the board, right? Because could look at it one way and say, well, we wanna make sure that we're not segregating racial populations, for example. But then you could look at it another way and say, well, we don't wanna dilute our, our racial communities. Right? In the, in the name of smoothing out the, you know, what makes Green Bay kind of unique, diverse and cool.
Agreed. And I think the discussion that you shared earlier about having community involvement and that is gonna be key. Because yeah, that rather than for a group to decide what's best, to have, um, the people at the table having the conversation.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
I was reviewing a little bit the, um, and I, maybe I misunderstood, but the, um, yeah, I have the, the spreadsheet, Josh, that you sent us about the, the capacities. And I was just looking mostly primarily at the elementary. So the, when we talk about capacity, there are some of those that have not yet been updated into this schema drawing yet.
I think we're, what we're going to need to, we've done, we've done the work to make sure that that conceptually everything fits. When we begin to draw our, when we begin to draw our boundaries, that's when we're going to need to settle in on programmatically, what is the optimal capacity, right? So we know we're in the right ballpark right now, but once we have this, this kind of final, this final thing and for example, not saying that this is gonna happen, this is just, just an example. The board says, you know what, we're gonna have the fine arts pathway going um, through the Langley four K through eight. Then at that time, we look at the programming, we, we come to a consensus on what the optimal capacity is for that building. Um, and then we do our boundary work based on that.
I guess there's, there's a couple that, there's a couple where it seemed kind of, kind of big. So I mean, plus or minus ten percent, sure, that's not, um, huge yet, but it, you had, um, you had Keller is at even higher capacity than the, the three twenty-five by, by quite a bit in the, the sheet. And then I'm trying to figure out what is, um, it seemed like Aldo's enrollment and capacity was maybe different than on the sheet than it is here. So if you could just give me a little bit about those and then deeper in the weeds, I'll, I'll email you and ask you about.
Sure. I know specifically at Keller, Keller's like the, the inverse of Preble, right? There's some disagreement at Preble, but that's because Preble was originally designed to have these awesome collaborative rooms, almost like, um, all, all over the place for faculty to collaborate. Those have been pressed into use as classrooms. So you'll see when you look at ATS and our numbers, those look higher than our internal numbers, right? Because there are rooms at Preble that are being used as classrooms that we had never intended on using as classrooms. At Keller, they've repurposed space to not be used as classrooms at, at this point. Does that kind of make sense, right?
And then just Aldo quick, um, it seemed like the, the Aldo numbers were, uh,
when you're looking at Aldo, it's the elementary school and then look again at the middle school and then combine the two. So part of it's broken down with the K, the use of it as an elementary school, if you're looking at the same chart with it.
So when I added up, add up Aldo, I get, I see a three hundred, a three hundred elementary on your sheet, Josh, and a one, and a one fifty middle, but then I see six thirty-five on the schema.
Well, I'll, I'll have to take, I'll look at that, Andrew. I, I mean, it could be just miskeyed by, by me.
Brian. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Nancy. I was just gonna make another comment relating to the whole boundaries and you, you're, you're a question about how long it takes to implement. So there are, it's, it's, it could be that the board could decide that you want to do certain things right away because as you look at the option, there are some that are simpler, that you, the entire population of one moves into the other. We have a few that are like that. So if the board chooses, that could happen sooner rather than later, right? But it's more of a question of how many times do you, you know, want to shift boundaries, right? And, and when you want to do that, if there's a decision, we just wanna do it all at once, or we need to do some of this now where it's simpler. So some of those things come into play as you start to look into the detail of, okay, when this building closes, where do those kids go? And, you know, does their entire capacity just cleanly fit? Could we do that now before a referendum? That's more of your discussion about how often do you wanna change boundaries and how clean it is to do that? So that's gonna be part of that, I think, ongoing maybe thought process for you and as part of that boundary task force potentially as well. If that helps that thought.
To dovetail on that, I would suggest that that's part of board guidance to the next task force on boundaries is limited disruption and continuity of plans.
Ryan.
Wanted to share that, um, and thank Josh for the comments with the neighborhoods and boundaries. And we had, we had requests or received information or requests from a different group. Um, I think that's recognized in the community and the culture of the schools as well with it. Green Bay, like you mentioned, has something like twenty-six neighborhoods or something in there and that, that's gonna be part of, I would assume, the boundary task force when we go forward to address that. So thank you. Um, you had also mentioned operation savings. I would assume that would help keep class sizes and through other practices that we're doing to address that deficit, but to address class sizes by those operational savings, hopefully keeping them similar sizes or that is the goal. I'm not sure who I'm asking that to right now, so.
Class size is set by board policy, um, and it's always our goal to abide by board policy. The, you're welcome. Um, you know, one of the issues that we have now is, um, at some of these smaller schools, you can't help but have a really, really small class size or a really, really large class size. You know, what happens when you start the year at twenty-one and you get twenty-four refugee families, as happened to Keller last year. You know, you get seven, seven new kids in that class. Do you go to twenty-eight? Technically permitted, do you split it to fourteen and fourteen, right? The, the, the larger, the, especially at the elementary school, the larger the student population, the more easily we are able to deal with, uh, changes. Um, the more we're able to keep, um, staff in one spot. You know, a lot of staff get reassigned, uh, just because of numbers every year. Um, that's less likely to happen.
This also gives us an opportunity to look at state funding for positions that we've addressed many times at this board. As far as the state keeping up on the funding of positions for English language learners and special education students. And when we have families coming in, the state recognizing that funding promise that had been made and hopefully stepping up to take care of that as well.
Is there anybody else? Go ahead.
So, um, you know, I've had several conversations with board members and the discussion has always been, we've asked you to do something very large and take a lot of personal time, um, and, um, that, you know, ultimately, we want to show as much respect to your time and the efforts that you've made as possible. Um, and I've struggled with what that looks like and if, what it feels like for me and how that's gonna manifest going forward. Um, and I can at least say this, um, I feel well-informed, right? And I feel like the district going out, engaging a third party. Uh, and I think I said when I received the report, it was well-distilled. It was very consumable. Um, it covered a lot of ground, um, and I could not imagine going into a decision like this without that kind of information. Um, and you brought to this another layer of community inputs. Uh, and, um, so, you know, whatever this ends up looking like, um, at the end of the day and how we decide to go forward and if we chunk it out or whatever. Um, I just want to, you to know that personally, I could not imagine doing what comes next um, without first having done this and, and gotten your input. So, you know, I, I know we've said thank you a lot, but I just wanna make sure you understand that, you know, we have a lot of hard decisions to make. And there's gonna be a lot of, um, conversations about how we go forward, um, but know that, uh, your efforts are on our mind um, as we go forward. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, one more, I guess I have one more technical thing and then one, one thing that's a bit more programmatic. When we're, utilization rates in the, the spreadsheet, um, is, are we talking about, um, is that the scenario where I, an ideal utilization rate is less than a hundred percent? Because then there's problems with using all the, the space, or is it of ideal?
Yeah, we have a couple of ways of looking at, we have a maximum capacity, which is if, um, okay, let, I'm gonna back up a little bit. So first of all, we look at it so that there's, uh, with middle schools and, and high schools, that there's a free period, uh, for the teacher to do prep work, that kind of thing. So, um, so ID, with a, a maximum capacity, we're still looking at a capacity of eighty-six percent of what a hundred percent would be. Cause we wanna have that prep time. We wanna have a bit of flexibility for scheduling and I think. But also we have what we call an ideal capacity, which is ninety percent of that number to allow for that a bit more flexibility in scheduling and that kind of thing. So, um, in reality, um, you know, you, you're not gonna get a class used one hundred percent of the time or even eighty-six percent of the time just because of difficulties of having, um, coordinating so many different subjects and, and that kind of thing. So, uh, we look at having that kind of ideal capacity of ninety percent of Ideal capacity of ninety percent of the maximum usage of a, of a school. Giving the teachers one prep. Period per day.
Okay, so it's ninety percent after also allowing for the one, the one prep period. And so that's what. If we look in here is that, that's what the. Port Howard at three eighty-eight is the ideal.
So the elementary, so that's middle school and high schools, you're more looking at utilization. So because, because they have, kids are moving all the time, right? They don't have a home base. Versus at your elementary level, you know, they've got a home, they've got their homeroom teacher, they're not moving around all over the place. So at the elementary level. We're counting classrooms used as classrooms. So it may be that, like in the case of Keller that we were talking about, they're using it for other things. Well, it maybe it could have been a cloud or they could have been special ed. Like if a school has a lot of full-size classrooms. They're using as special ed rooms. We're not counting it as a classroom because it's special ed. It may be that it would be better utilized if we could have put a special ed room in a room half that size. Because typically a special ed space doesn't need to be a full-size classroom, but they're using it because it's there. Right? So you have schools not being used efficiently because they've got this extra space that they can spread out and. In, but that's a, that is affecting our capacity calculations because we're seeing it labeled as a special ed classroom. So there's little nuances in all of this that come into effect. Once you start to have a specific plan. And if we start to say, okay, we're going to do educational adequacy alterations, some of the things we can look at it then is saying, okay, let's be more efficient. About how we right-size special ed spaces and get those small groups that rooms, things that are needed for other things. So, but to start with, we're saying, okay, we're counting. What's labeled as a general classroom times twenty-five kids as a elementary. Level for, for that. That's how the elementaries get calculated.
And just, just following on from that as well. This is very much a snapshot in time. So. Like Nancy said at Keller, yeah, there's lots of full-size classrooms that have been used as special ed, but that's particular at this time. You know, we're, we're looking at the capacity based on how it's used. Well, a year or two years ago now, and the same with the high.
Updated though. You talked about principles again after.
Yeah. Yeah, we did. We did go through a round of kind of corrections with. The principals of the schools to try and make sure we're on the same page there. And then also with the high schools and middle schools, the way that we use to calculate the. Capacity is based on the way that the school is used now. So we're, we're taking the proportions of students who are studying different things. And then multiplying a factor until we get to. When there's, you know, when we reach that ideal capacity. So, you know, it could be that. The, the proportions of people studying art or. English or whatever changes and that might have an influence on the capacity as, as time changes things.
You've talked about efficiency a lot. Can you, this is going to sound like a silly question. But. Can you ask, answer the question, why is efficiency important? Or maybe more importantly. What happens when a school district doesn't use its facilities? Efficiently. Go ahead, Josh.
So you, you know, you've heard it. Beat into your heads by Angie over there that eighty percent of our expenditures are salary and benefits. When you are. When you have inefficient buildings that leads to inefficient staffing, that means that. Your biggest expenditure in the district, you're not getting the bang for the buck. That you could otherwise be getting. That also means we're probably spending more on staffing than we need to. And perhaps we could allocate, reallocate some of that money into. Other things or specialized programs or, you know, that, that's all money. Think if your, if your house isn't insulated very well, right? A lot of heat kind of escapes. That's, that's kind of. The way to think about it. If you're able to. Keep that heat in, you can put money not towards your heating bill, but you can put it toward. I don't know, a new.
Upsetting your kitchen.
Yeah, new cabinets.
Okay. Good, Brian.
This will also help us. In operational costs as far as traveling teachers, as far as specialists, our OT and our PT and our foreign language teachers. Having less time traveling, which means I would assume they'd have more time to be able to teach and. Still make those connections with students instead of traveling through three buildings. Get them to one building, possibly two, which will. I assume is considered in part of that operational expense, but something just to kind of look into as well with it, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's operationally more expensive and it's also worse for kids. It just is. We, we went and talked to the Keller staff. Last week. We had offered to come out to whatever school invited us to, you know, and they're obviously on the list and they're red and we didn't really know what to expect and. That staff was. Very, very student-centered and they talked about the difficulties they have having a different gym teacher every year because they get the leftovers and they can only be there. You know. Once a week and that messes up their schedule because then they have to schedule all around the one, one gym teacher. The kids come in, in, in the fall and say, who's our gym teacher this year? They talked about only having access to a counselor twice a week. There are some. There are some students there with some pretty heavy trauma. In a, in a larger school, they recognize that. The kids have access to more services more often.
Go ahead, Brian.
And looking, and I'm sorry, Andrew, looking at that K model with some of them and looking at those. Improved services, that also gives us an opportunity to look at a community school model. It also gives us. That opportunity to continue to build a culture within that school where there's tied into the less transitions, you know, from a. Elementary to a middle school, but hopefully. A slightly larger geographical area. Gives us the opportunity that if a student has to move, if, if they're within that same area, they can still remain in that school and build that culture and. And, and build the expectations and the consistency with that staff as well. So.
Andrew.
I, I too want to thank the committee. This is, this is the type of. Starting point we needed to, you know, we need to have to be able to now assimilate the community input that we'll, we'll receive. I, I certainly have, you know, I've had ideas of my own throat. I've heard, you know, people coming to me from the, from the public with, with ideas. And for me as an individual elected official, I. I don't. I don't run for the school board and, and sit here because, because I think I know better. I'm actually do it because, because I don't. And I'm looking forward to adding, adding to this valuable input. Uh, what we hear in the community over, over the next days. And it may be. That there will be things, there will be opinions in the community that may or may not be reflected in a board decision where. Maybe the community wants certain things that isn't where the math is the best and the, the dollars are the best. Do we need to? Save money? Yes. Do we have to consolidate? Buildings? Yes, we're going to have built, we have buildings that would be a, you know, are less than half full now and be a quarter full. So. But I look forward to these, these next community phases and regardless of. And, you know, things that, and that's our, that's our piece as independent elected officials is to put the, put the technical. Pieces together with the community pieces and. So, thank you.
Brian.
I have a, a comment and then a question with it. When looking at the spaces for special education. Rooms as they're set up now. It's incredibly difficult and I don't know if it was taken into. Consideration with that, obviously special education is a huge umbrella. So the utilization of a room for OT and PT services. And physical, well, physical therapy in particular compared to. A small group for a speech. I'm assuming it's, that's getting too far into the weeds when we're looking at the specific rooms onto that. So. Something for us to can take into consideration when we're looking at buildings and spaces with that. My other question. Having also went and spoke with some staff members at one of the buildings and having. Worked at Washington for twelve years. Vicky, I was wondering if you would be able to tell us a little bit or anyone on the committee. Specifically the physical concerns taking place with the facilities at Washington and why. Washington is on the list with that.
Yeah, we're fighting over this one. I do want to hear from ATS and R. I will tell you in, in my opinion. I think the students that currently attend Washington Middle School deserve better. When I look at what our students across the district and other middle schools have access to. I'm embarrassed. That, that's what we provide them. We don't have a playground. We don't have a place for those students to. Have fired. Except for walking across a major road. I just, I think we can do better. And for those that have been at Washington for any period of time, you know that in spring. Uh, as we get closer to summer, there's almost always. A plumbing issue. Which our kids don't deserve and our staff don't deserve. And. We can't fix it without a heck of a lot of money. Again, I'm talking from my opinion. I, I think those kids and staff deserve better. Would ATS and R or Josh add anything?
So, and you mentioned some of that, I mean, that whole, the lack of green space. It's a sea of parking lot. Out there, right? And, and there's some really weird. Nooks and crannies and spaces that don't have good natural light. And just from an educational adequacy standpoint, we just had a lot of concerns. There and for those same reasons that you're talking about compared to what's available at some of the, the rest of the. Uh, of the middle schools. And we also have, I think, a lot of classes that are too small, if I remember, or. Yeah, about a third of the classrooms are undersized. So think about that in relation, that's, that's a pretty big number. To be able to, you know, meet what those, those standards are. Uh, and there's also some, though they're, they're on the. They're on the, I wasn't able to put them in the medium priorities because they're, they're later than ten years, but. That whole building is going to need tuck pointing in. Twelve, fifteen years. I almost put it on the medium priority and then I held back because it wasn't as bad as some of the other ones. But it's a big building and most of it, there's a big chunk of it that's an original, that tuck pointing thing, that's going to be a lot of money. There's some, there was a roofs on the list. Now some of that got in the referendum, this first referendum. That he mentioned, but again, it's a, it's a large portion of that building is quite old and, and the upkeep of that. You know, she mentioned the plumbing, things you can't fix anymore, galvanized piping, potentially plumbing piping that. Has to be completely ripped out and redone. All of that kind of stuff. Is. Just baked into a, a building of that size. So, so there's, there's the educational piece, which was. Biggest thing, but there's facility needs there too that are. Out longer term even that. That I'll just go into that.
I've, I've got one more thing because you mentioned the nooks and crannies that also presents a. A very difficult supervision issue. And Brian, you probably know that having taught there. The kids know where, where they can't be seen, right? And that leads to. Potentially undesirable behaviors.
Go ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to also add, you know. When we're talking about the upkeep, this is, this is aging things. This is not. Questioning our facilities department or anything like that. And no one, no one has made that, you know, a concern with it. The, the buildings are beautiful and the buildings are well-kept, but the. The cost of it, I, I completely understand. When I was teaching there, we had a piece of glass that was broken on one of the windows and one of the facilities, people came up to me and told me that was the original piece of glass from the building. And they could tell that by when they replaced it, that, you know, that glass was sixty-five, you know, it's inside doors. So, I mean, the upkeep is happening there and we, we have beautiful buildings. You know, this is just continuing to happen. So, or I'm sorry, not continuing to happen, but the, the bigger. Issues I, I get.
Is there anybody else? All right, I'm just going to wrap this up then. There are a couple, there are a couple data things that I just can't quite. Get past. One is one in four seats is in our district right now is vacant. The other one is that there's wildly divergent cost per student in our buildings across the district. That, that should, that needs to be evened out. That's my opinion. Every single thing in this room. Is paid for with tax dollars. And we need to respect. How we use those tax dollars. That doesn't mean we don't take into consideration other, a whole. Bunch of other things. But. We're limited. That pie is only so big and we can't count on the state legislature to adequately fund public education. So this is where we are and. And we also know that other districts are going through this process, maybe on a smaller scale, but we're a huge district. So it's, you gotta scale everything up. And. It's, it's, it's happening across our state. In various degrees. So what are we talking about here? We're really talking about the future. We're talking about the future of this district. And not just in two years or three years. We're talking about twenty years, thirty years. What is our community going to look like? What is our community going to need? And so when Brian talks about opportunity, yes, this is a huge opportunity. That doesn't mean there won't be loss. But there is also a lot of opportunity. And I know that our district supports our schools. They just proved it to us with the last referendum. You know, and, and I know that going forward, i- if we work as a team. Our board, our administration, ATS and R and our community at large, that we can do this work. It will not be easy. It will not be easy. So again, let's talk about the future. Let's focus on the future. And, and I, I urge everybody who is in this room. Who is watching from home, who might watch this presentation or this meeting. Tomorrow or the next day or whatever, to go to our website, you can see all the different minutes and everything from these various task force meetings. There's piles of data. Um, I just revisited some of it today and I just got a kind of a, you know, a, a, the full effect of all the work that you all have put into this. Please go, please urge people if they have questions to watch this presentation that you did tonight because it will. It will be a good starting point for anyone who might be coming in at the beginning of their knowledge base on this. And there's probably a lot of people in our community. Who haven't been necessarily paying attention quite yet, but they're ready now. So they can go there and at least watch that presentation. And then if they have more questions, they can reach out. That, that would be my hope at this point. There's a lot of work left and our board, I think, is, is, is up for it, but. I guess that's kind of my thoughts for that. Go ahead, Brian.
Could you share the opportunities that the community would have for various roundtables and listening sessions?
Go ahead, Vicky.
Uh, tomorrow night, Tuesday, five thirty at West High School, there'll, there will be a tabletop discussion facilitated by ATS and R. And all of that feedback will be shared with the board. There will be a repeat of that Wednesday night at five thirty PM at East High School. Both will be in the comments. And then on May twenty-fourth, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, the Board of Education will hold a public forum. Beginning at four PM at Washington Middle School in the auditorium. Participants will be given three minutes to share their feedback with the board.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So there will be in the next few weeks, opportunity for people to come and let us know how you feel. And you can always email us and there's also still online an opportunity to leave feedback there as well. So just wrapping this up. I just need to say one more time. I'm sorry, because it's, it's a big thing what you guys have done for our community. And thank you again and everyone in this, in this room that was part of the task force. If you were part of this task force, will you please stand up? Thank you very much. Okay, you are dismissed. We're going to move on to more. We have a little bit more business to do, but you guys can go ahead and. Move, move on with your night. We were going to move on. Do, do we all need a break? Okay, we're gonna, we are going to take a five-minute break. All right. All right, all right. That was true. Okay, y'all, we're going to get started again. Are you, you're, you're doing the fee schedule, right? Okay, all right. Okay. We're missing Brian. Oh. It's hot in here. I know. It's like a wall. Normally it's cold. Yeah, all right. I, I think, I, I think we can keep going. All right.
I think that's for me. I mean, good stuff. I mean, did you see how the room cleared? It was like, you know, I was a little offended.
Maybe they're doing a little bit of celebrating, which I think they're entitled to.
Yeah, right, right. I'm sure they'll all get to come back in for this.
So anyway, we're going to let Vicki finish her conversation, but we're going to keep moving here. So, so the next thing on our agenda is the 2023-24 fee schedule. And Angie, why don't you go ahead and talk about that?
Sure. So, so the proposal for the board is to, to increase some of our student fees for the 23-24 school year. As I had noted in the memo that was attached to the agenda today, we haven't touched an increase in fees for many, many years for a lot of these. So asking for a minimal increase. So the proposal includes an increase of $5 to our general fee, to our graduation fee, and then also to our transcript fee, which will cover the cost of the software increase that we use to produce those transcripts. And then we also included in the proposal is just a $6 increase to the musical instrument rental, which is going from $54 to 60. So with this proposal, we would be generating around 35, approximately $35,000 in revenue for 23-24. And then really basically, that's it. We just haven't done this for a really long time. So we felt like there, you know, that we needed to do a minimal increase to these, to these general fees just to keep, keep in line with, with where we're headed.
Okay.
Questions?
Go ahead, Brian.
Do we know the last time the parking permit fee has been raised?
I do not know that question, but I will, I can look into it. It's been a long, long time. It's been $75 for, for quite a while.
And do we know approximately how many parking permits we issue?
I don't. And really that's, you know, and we talked about that at Exec Cabinet this morning. You know, we would want the principals definitely to weigh in, you know, the building administrators to weigh in on what they're, what they're doing for the parking fee permit as like the athletic fees, things like that, that come through. Tim Flood usually kind of directs that towards me. He didn't have any proposals this year for an increase in fees. But we can definitely look into that for you. The history.
Yes. Um, I know that increasing the parking fee, I feel like there's a lot of students because like we need to be able to park. A lot of us get to school every day by driving ourselves. And then in order to park there, we need that parking pass. Otherwise, we get tickets. So I know that like for me personally, it's not an issue. But I can see how for some people, paying more than $75 already could become pretty expensive to park at school when that's your form of transportation there as well. But yeah.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I'm pleased to see that it's the, it's the fees that are waivable for, for free lunch that got the increases. I, I would be a bit, it's not being proposed right now. I would be a bit concerned that there might be some difficulty if the parking permit fee went up. But generally speaking, as someone who's been pretty vocal about fees before, these changes trail so far below inflation for however many years it's been that it's, it's not even, it's not even close. And all the ones being increased are waivable for people, families who receive free lunch. So this seems.
Also, I, I believe that there's been some comparisons done to districts around us and that their, their fees are significantly higher than this, even with the changes.
Yeah, we seem to be, you know, pretty much in line. It's not like we are, you know, over the top or even there are some that are charging other fees as well. Like sometimes you'll see districts charge like a technology user fee. We don't do that. Some schools charge within our, you know, neighboring districts. Some schools charge activity fees like to participate in activities. This is really the list of fees that we charge and that's it. So there isn't any outside, you know, outside of this list that we're charging for things like technology, things like that. So.
If possible, I'd like to find out the response from the high school staff about the possibility of increasing the parking fee by $5 because I may ask for that at the next meeting.
Anybody else? Okay. Then we can, thank you, Angie. We can move on to the next item, which is going to be under policy and governance, the 100 series. And we're joined by Melissa Field Coller. Good evening. Laura, do you want to facilitate each policy number or? Do you have?
Yeah, thank you. This, these, this 100 series is related to the board policies related to our duties, authority and governance. And President McCoy and I have had the chance to review these as, for me, being head of the Policy and Governance Committee when we had the subcommittees for a while. And so we had a chance to look these over and meet with Melissa. And I think it would make sense just to go through each of them without me calling on each one. So thank you.
Okay. And just to add a little bit more background for our newer board members. A number of years ago, we set out a policy review cycle where we tried to review two of this series each year. The 100 and 200 series are up for this year. We're a little bit behind, but we will have the 200s to you in June. So that technically still is the 22-23 school year. A few things have happened this school year that have kind of derailed our timeline. But we're happy to be here to discuss the 100 series policies. So when we look at the entire series, we're looking for, does it reflect the current practice and procedures of the district? Does it need to be updated for any statutory reasons or legal changes? And is there other best practices out there that we, which we should incorporate into our procedures? And are there any policies or rules, the procedural rules that we have not adopted that we should probably adopt or that could help provide clarity and transparency to our stakeholders? So that's the frame that we usually approach when we go through the policy series review. So I have a, the policy series considerations was a chart that was included in the board docs and that's in front of every policy. We can just go through that quickly for the ones that have not had any changes. And I can just, I'll tell you if primarily it still reflects the board's practice and procedures. The 100 series refers to the board's powers and duties as Laura said. And so if no changes were necessary to reflect the board's policies and procedures, we didn't make any changes to those. So 110 is the district's mission. We didn't touch that, knowing that Dr. Tiller will be arriving sometime soon. That will be his work with the board if there needs to be a change to the district's mission. Similarly to the strategic roadmap and no changes to that. We are recommending to adopt policy 112.1, which is strategic planning so that there is a better description and policy that addresses the processes of the board and the district that would be engaged in at the time the board and the district begin that strategic planning process. Were there any questions on that one? Go ahead.
Yes. In this policy, you have in section two, A1 on the Board of Education as part of an enumeration of stakeholders, of which you're not going to invite all of them to participate. So my question is, is these select members of the Board of Education that Dr. Taylor will select? Or is it the entire Board of Education? You see how it's just a new, it, part of an enumeration of large stakeholder groups that Dr. Taylor will be able to choose from? I just need clarification.
So the language in two, A1, the strategic planning process shall involve representation from the various district stakeholders, members of the Board of Education, administrators.
It sounds like Dr. Taylor can choose members to represent the Board of Education. And I need to understand if that's in fact your intention or if it's just a a placement issue.
So I read, I drafted this with the understanding that it would be the responsibility of Dr. Tiller to select the, the strategic planning team members within the district employment and that the board members themselves, all of the board would be part of that process. So we can rephrase that if that's not what you would like or if you want more clarity.
I, I don't know. Dramatically, it sounds like we would be part of populations from which he would choose members. And, and I think if we can clarify that, I would appreciate that.
Thank you for pointing that out and I'll clarify that and bring that back next week or in two weeks. Okay. Any other questions on 112.1?
Nancy? Mike, Nancy.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay, it shall be the responsibility of the superintendent, superintendent of schools and learning. What is and learning? Is that teaching and learning? Pardon? That's the, the whole thing is called that. Okay, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. Hey, good on that one. Okay. We are also proposing policy one thirteen, non discrimination in district programs, activities and operations. This policy addresses the overall non discrimination requirements in all of the district's programs, activities and operations. And augments the other non discrimination policies adopted by the Board of Education. Any questions on that one? Okay. Policy one thirty, uh, school district and school board legal status. We're recommending revisions to policy one thirty to include clarity as to both the district and the board's legal status. So prime, um, right now, policy one thirty was very short in its description. We have added that the school district is a unified school district. That question comes up routinely because that matters for purposes of meetings and postings. And then also, um, we've clarified that the board is at large and not appointed seats because that also matters with respect to how elections are conducted. Lynn?
Couldn't you just please tell me what a unified school district is?
There's two types of school districts, a common school district and a unified school district. If you are a common school district, then you are required to have an organizational meeting at, um, the beginning. And I think it's in April, when you have to have the organizational meeting. The, uh, electors can come and help set the levy. They can make various different motions that the board then has to implement. Um, a unified school district does not have that organizational meeting and the board um, has more of a governance structure in that's, in that, um, structure. How the district became a unified versus a common, that exists before me and I, I wouldn't be able to tell you that. James?
Um, yes, uh, let me just make sure I know what section, um. Well, it's, I'm looking at the red line. So I think it's the new section D. It's the last paragraph of the policy. Last sentence, further, one of the expressed statutory powers of the board is for the power to do all things reasonable to promote the cause of education. I'm just looking for, uh, um, an understanding of, um, the nature of that power. The use of the word promote, is that advocacy?
That would be advocacy, um, and that would also be promoting, just as you did here tonight, discussing the future of the district and the facilities, promoting within the district, the education of students.
Okay, so in our role, the use of that sentence does not in any way conflict with the delegation of powers, operational, um, authority to the superintendent. This is, because I, I don't like anything reasonable to promote. I, I just want to make sure that I'm not seeing a conflict of we delegate certain powers and, but then we can also do whatever. It, it, there is, I'm trying to look for the box of what that's, that statement is supposed to define. You know, does that make sense?
I don't have the statutory language in front of me. But my understanding that is within the statutory language of the powers and duties of the Board of Education. Brian?
Would we be able to add on that part that James is talking about, the cause of education? Would we be able to add public education? The cause of public education.
It's your policy, so it's not illegal, so you certainly can add that.
And, and my follow up is, would there be any detriment to adding that, that you can see?
I don't see any detriment that your, your role, your limit is public education. So it would be accurate.
While this is a work session and we can't take votes on it, I'd be thrilled if you would add that.
Next policy is policy one thirty one, school board elections. No existing policy currently addresses the board seat apport- apportionment and procedures associated with the school board elections. This policy provides that transparent terms to the electors of the district. Any questions with respect to this policy? Okay, all right. School board vacancies, policy one thirty three. A slight revision to include the language of policy one sixty two regarding orientation of newly elected or appointed board members. So we're just combining a really small policy into one that largely touches on that issue so that we're not, um, having short policies that probably should be incorporated elsewhere. Okay. And then, um, with respect to rule one thirty three, we're proposing revisions to clarify the process used by the board for filling vacancy, vacancies on the Board of Education due to resignation of a board member. We have had to utilize the procedures for filling vacancies due to resignations. So we're just, um, codifying those procedures that we've done in the past to make it more clear. Okay. Okay, uh, no changes proposed to policies one forty one, one forty two, one forty three, one fifty, one fifty one, one fifty one point two, one fifty one point five. And then we are proposing to adopt policy one fifty three, board self evaluation. So from time to time, the board has conducted a self evaluation. There has been questions about whether it's required. This policy sets, this is a model policy from WASB. And so this policy sets forth the language with respect to boards conducting those self evaluations. Laura? It's been a long time since we've done this. I, um, I think it might be a good idea to have this be a little bit more stringently. It's as we had with COVID and various other things, we've had so much disruption in our yearly cycle, um, and so mu- many heavy issues that this has been, um, maybe a little neglected. So, um, I would like to get on a schedule basically if possible and Kinsey, maybe you can help us with that. I don't know when an appropriate time would be that we would maybe take this work on, but I feel like it would be, um, very, um, fruitful work for us as a board to at least once a year do this. So anyway, that's all. Brian?
Looking at, you know, policies always outlive the board and the current makeup of it. And I understand the reasoning for having an open session. What happens if a board chooses not to do this if it's a board policy? And what happens if a board member chooses not to participate in it and it's a board policy?
So as to your first question, um, if a board chooses not to do something, the board has the autonomy and the authority to suspend your policies at any time. So you can definitely do that. Uh, if a board member chooses not to participate in that evaluation, the board always has the right to sanction, um, a board member, but that would probably be the extent to it. I would, I think that if this is such important work and that voice isn't heard at the table, that probably um, carries its own ramifications. Andrew?
Yeah, I think it would just be important to make sure that the system of self evaluation was one in such that board members, including those with, uh, who may be elected with a minority perspective would feel confident that their voice would also be heard and not feel the need to make some kind of a statement by not attending, which I'm not seeing anyone here would, but I've could, I could have seen times when people, including myself, might, might not have, although I have gone to all board self evaluations and we've done them, you're right, there haven't been that many. So. That's my thought.
Brian?
Is there a mechanism for doing the, the, I don't want to say not an open session, but there's recognizing personalities and potential disagreements that would close conversation with having in an open session. Are there opportunities for a board to have facilitation of a retreat or something where that it could take place if necessary? Once again, I'm not speaking of this board in particular, but these policies outlive boards with it. Am I, am I kind of clear on what I'm looking for?
So the board has brought in a facilitator in the past for the, for different retreats for the board themselves. Those would have to be an open session. Um, but absolutely having a facilitator present is something that the board has done in the past and can do. Okay, moving on to school board advocacy. Uh, this, James is getting to your question, uh, previously and Brian, with respect to the role of advocacy, this policy sets forth the, your role in advocacy, advocating for public education and is clearly defined and, uh, sets forth that in the policy. Okay. School board member authority, no changes recommended for policy one sixty one. Uh, as I mentioned before, policy one sixty two is recommended to be appealed, to fold that into that earlier policy. We're recommending that we adopt policy one sixty three, which is board member development activities. This, um, policy sets forth a comprehensive approach for the development and ongoing learning of board members. Any questions on that new one? Okay. Policy one sixty three point one, no recommended changes. Policy one sixty four, you just revised, um, in February with respect to board member compensation. Um, policy one sixty five, school board member behavior and ethical standards. There's no, um, recommendation for changes on that policy. Policy one sixty five point one, school board member conflicts of interest. This policy is recommended to be revised to provide procedures for abstaining or recusing oneself from certain conflicts. Some further cle- clarification came out from the Wisconsin Ethics Commission on the recusal and abstaining. So this policy just reflects those recommendations. Any questions on that? Okay, um, policy one sixty six, board member electronic communication and, and policy one seventy. Meetings of the Board of Education and rule one seventy are not recommended for any changes. Policy one seventy one point one, public notification of board meetings. We are recommending that we adopt this policy to provide the specific manner in which the public must be notified of board and other district related governing body meetings as adopted by the board. So this is what we're doing currently and just puts it into policy. Okay, one seventy one point two and one eighty one are not recommended for any revisions. Brian, this one's for you. One eighty one rule, basic procedures for board meetings. Feel free to recommend changes to, um, slice and dice. This is drafted with, um, you in mind, recognizing the need for further clarification as to following those Robert's rules of order.
I was wondering if anyone has any questions on that. Um, when I was bringing this up at the last meeting, my concern is just making sure that, uh, who's ever chairing the committee has a lot of stuff going on and making sure that we're hearing the voices on a consistent basis. So, which we do, you know, and having those opportunities just to make sure that that is set. So, um, this meets it. I, I'd like some opportunity for a speaker's list on there, just so the chair recognizes, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of stuff and some capacity of having that on. When we're having a topic like we just had with it, it, it's human nature for heads to turn one way or the other and to just it, it happens. So this gives that protection to, um, everyone, just to make sure that they'll, everyone has a chance to speak in an orderly fashion.
James?
So talk to me about that because I recognize that speaker lists usually are formulated in advance. How would you imagine doing that some in, in, in meeting?
In previous small groups that have been on, it's literally names on an index card. When they want to speak, it's put up either on a for or against or just on. And when they speak, it comes down and the next person raises their hand, their, their hands listed, you know, their opportunities on there. So what happens, once you speak, once you're pulled off the list and you're put back down to the bottom, if you want to speak, you, you raise your hand. It's literally an index card being set up there and it just goes in that order. I don't think we necessarily need to look at it as a a for and against on a motion, but then it just keeps that list going.
So, uh, I didn't read necessarily that in here, right? It, it's not in there. That's right. Cause when I look at this, uh, I would, I'd be biased to solve problems and I would be interested in everyone's opinion as to whether or not we have a problem that we're solving with that, that type of overhead, because I think it does. We do a lot of following up, right? And, and pushing around and I recognize, you know, other boards may, may, um, act differently. Um, but I would be more interested in the making sure that the for and against, you know, get equal, equal time, but I think the chair could direct that.
And.
Oh, I just hit a button that does something different. I don't know what, okay. Um, I think that, that would also, uh, this policy kind of will tighten up the follow up questions that, you know, I'm just as guilty of stretching for that opportunity to make a follow up when I'm not really following up. I'm just as guilty as everyone else on it. So I think us recognizing that would be helpful with it. I don't know if that really answered anything with that, so.
Andrew, did you still have a question and then Lynn?
Yeah, mine is, uh, a different, um, different topic. So I'm, it within this, this policy. I'm very surprised and very concerned that in otherwise policies that are just, um, clarifying and adding and things that need to be add that we have, um, secret ballot election of, of officers here. I, I think that is, uh.
Where is that, Andrew? Cause that's not allowed. Uh, under board statute. Thank you for catching that. I will delete that.
So that was a type, not intended copy paste or something. Okay. I think that was my only, um, thing. Uh, oh, I guess I have one other thing that I, I, it probably isn't gonna go very far, but you know, the, the issue of, the issue of seconds in a group of, of seven is, is interesting and there are there, there are some options for small groups in Robert's Rules of Order and yeah, the reason that a large body, the reason that a legislature needs a second is so that one person can't be tying up, you know, one, uh, well, the federal, sometimes you can do it anyways, but in, um, you know, so one out of one hundred or one out of fifty or one out of thirty three can't force something to be discussed that is, um, it's, it seems a little different here that for an idea to even be heard, you now need twenty eight point six percent approval for the motion to even be heard, for an item to even get a, a vote and that seems to, two sounds like a small number, but two out of seven suddenly is, is kind of a high bar. Uh, personally, I will, I, I, for my part, I will always second a motion. always second a motion unless something so ridiculous, no one here would say it. But it's, it's interesting. Roberts does have some considerations for, for this.
I, I'd like to respond to the, both of those two points. I absolutely believe that it's important to second, no matter the size of the group, because it, uh, when you're going to have a motion for debate, there really, it really needs to be something of interest to more than just one person. I could, for example, I think we have therapy dogs on the agenda later on and you know, I could just insist on talking about therapy dogs and that sort of thing. And, and so I, I disagree with Andrew. I think that a second is important, even though we have a small group. And as for the, um, the point before that, um, and that was about, um, ensuring that everyone has a chance to speak once before anyone speaks twice. That is a, one of Roberts rules. I do, I, I had entered my, uh, suggestions, um, in the, um, document earlier and I did suggest that that be put in because it is important that, uh, let's just say, for example, that I'm opposed to something and I just know you're all going to be for it. And so I raise my hand and I speak against it. And then Laura raises her hand and she speaks for it and I right away raise my hand because I want to refute what she said. And then Nancy raises her hand and she wants to speak for it and I right away raise my hand because I want to refute that. It's really important that everyone get a chance to speak once, as Brian was saying, before someone speaks twice. I don't know that you have to have a, a card or anything like that, but I just think that it ought to be in, you know, it ought to be stated in the rules, that that's how we proceed.
James?
So I agree with you. Um, and I guess I just want to make it clear, it was the mechanism that I was concerned with and the overhead of, you know, making the cards and everything versus having someone control and make sure that everyone has a, so writing it into the, uh, policy. I'm, I'm okay with as far as making it where everyone gets to speak.
Yes. And so that's why it might also be important that we all understand what point of order means. Because that is your permission to interrupt and say, Laura, point of order and make the chairman, because it is like, like Brian said, it is a lot going on and so, or maybe you said that. So yes, I think we all need to, to know what point of order is, what point of information is and what point of personal privilege is.
Please promise me at some point you're going to point at me like that.
No, I'm not.
Please. Brian, did you want to add something?
I am understanding we need to add something loosely about a speaker's list where each individual gets to speak first before anyone gets called on second, if they want to speak. And then I'm going to delete the last sentence in paragraph uh, A five, thank you, Andrew, and then, um, information added, maybe some definitions on point of order, point of information and point of personal privilege. Okay? Thank you.
Laura?
If we, if we implement that though, that'll be, that'll be a bit of a change from what this kind of more loose conversational. So, um, uh, we'll have to kind of hold each other to that and, and maybe readjust our thinking on how we've, we've become. I mean, the whole time I've been on the board, it was very loose and, um, and, you know, it'll, it might take a little bit of practice before we're good at it.
Brian?
The way I've seen in other groups, like I said, it, it's either a dry erase board, it's a scratch pad. It's on there or like I said, it's, it's an index card and it's usually the person saying next to whoever is chairing the meeting. And it's just kind of keeping that out, uh, as a spotter of seven people. And they just put it on. So it, it's, it's, sounds much more intense than what it is.
Won't that make our, our discourse much more, um, won't it be, take more time though to be doing that? It feels like it would be a, like a little cumbersome, that's all.
Lynn?
So it's, if I understand correctly, it's not that everyone has to speak in a certain order. It's just that everyone who wants to speak gets a chance to speak. That, and, and so Brian's idea is just that there's a list and so everyone got a chance if they wanted to. But if nobody wants to speak, they don't have to.
Brian?
It's so we're speaking in an order with it and sometimes what, so yes, it's, everyone has that chance, but it, just the makeup of the room, heads can go one way as opposed to the other and it just gives someone to be a spotter and just to see and, and making sure that that's being said. I'm not concerned that people haven't had that opportunity to speak, but sometimes I myself, I'm guilty of it. Overtaking the conversation and it, just helping everyone when they get their hand up, you know, they're added to the list and, and just keeping it, it actually flows more efficiently with it, so.
Okay, thank you. Policies one eighty-two, one eighty-three, one eighty-four and one eighty-seven are not being recommended for, uh, any further revisions. Policy one eighty-seven rule is being, uh, recommended to adopt because this provides the specific procedures that you've already adopted and that you're already using that accompany the board's public participation in board meetings. So there's nothing new in here. This reflects the pieces of paper that our community already hands in with respect to those rules. Those rules were discussed at a board meeting. They just were never codified with respect to a board rule. Brian?
I appreciate the fact that we opened up public forums to anyone that would like to speak. I know some districts, they have limitations on what's listed. So I think this is a strong policy of our district that anyone is able to speak. If you're someone from Plaski and you're terribly concerned about, we allow you to speak. So I think we should be proud of that.
Nancy?
Something happened weird tonight, though. The Hispanic people were, wanted to speak at the public forum and they came at the wrong time. And Vicky, did you approach them with that? Is that what you were, okay, because, yeah.
Yeah, not specifically about their lack of opportunity tonight, but we are planning to meet.
Andrew?
Um, haven't, haven't we generally made a, uh, historically made a call for any, any other people wishing to speak that don't have a forum? Everyone who does a forum goes first. Um, haven't we generally done that?
I believe Laura didn't do that tonight. No?
I don't know if I understand what you mean exactly, like.
After the two people spoke, you know, then you just say, is there anybody else here?
Oh, if I neglected, I apologize.
But I don't know if they were here yet because I think they came for six o'clock. And we were all ready with the task force then.
Andrew?
Man, possibly at the timing of six o'clock, it might have worked out, but perhaps right after the task force. You know, we do, we do, I, I would like to see us in addition, have the public forum be, be primary. But I, I think there is room for a motion like they do on city council to suspend the rules and allow interested parties to address the board. Uh, I don't think it would necessarily always pass. We wouldn't necessarily always want to do it, but this might have been a situation where, where we would have. But I don't know that that requires, uh, I don't know, that requires anything to change here because it's a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm not calling myself. How do we know that they were here to speak? Was there some, I didn't know that anybody was here to speak that didn't have the chance.
They told me yesterday they were going to come, but then when I saw them, I thought, well, it just flowed from one to the other, so we didn't start at six o'clock. And I think that's what happened.
Laura?
We're kind of drifting off the subject here a little bit, but, um, we can have that discussion another time, but I think we should focus on these policies right now.
I think, is that, wait, we're talking about the public participation at the board meeting, so it's kind of. Anybody have, Brian?
This is the public comment section and we would be able to, on some items, if we know it's going to be a larger item, would we be able to post a second public comment section in regards to that? So, you know, item A, we have our public forum and then after report for something like that, would that be something that has been done before? Would we be running into difficulty as far as our postings?
We did try that, um, and the agenda got a little messy and a little confusing as to when that would happen. I agree with what Andrew said, at any time the board can vote to suspend the rules and allow for the public comment. I think really that's probably the easiest.
Brian?
I think if we know that there's going to be a topic that's going to be of high interest, I mean, we, we facilitate overflow rooms on there, it may be worthwhile adding that on the agenda item. That eliminates any possibility of why didn't we add it? And recognizing that it's a, it's a pretty big topic, whereas, you know, we've done in the past where we've had a, a smaller topic or, you know, we've had two people interested in something and we realize it's going to be a lengthy meeting. We've kind of bumped it on that. But I think it wouldn't be a bad practice for us as we have some of these larger items to add as a secondary part. It's my idea.
I like Melissa's idea of just asking for a suspension of the board, because how are we going to determine what is a value of importance and not based on volume? But I think it generally, if we do that as a board, then we have the vote to be able to do that if we all deem it something worthy to take that adjustment for.
Yeah, I think it's a very subjective. Um, it could be anyway, let's put it that way, it could be, so, um, I don't know what the procedure would be if someone suggests, oh, opening the floor again or open forum. Like I, I, now, now we'd have to vote on that. Yeah. Um, and if, if it's possible that one board member has, uh, like more knowledge about somebody than we, the rest of us do, or won't it matter maybe? I don't know.
Lynn and then Brian?
So, um, based on my experience with city council, it's, as Andrew said, if Nancy knew that there were people out there who wanted to speak on a certain topic and they missed the opportunity at the public forum, she could, um, after we had the, the presentation by the task force, she could have said, Madam Chairman, if, if you, I mean, because if you hadn't, weren't asking for people to talk about something, she might have to get your attention and she might say, um, I know there are people out here who want to speak on this and I move that we suspend the rules so we can open the floor and let them speak. And then if someone seconds it, then we have to vote and if people don't want to open the floor, we don't open the floor and if they do, we do. So it could work.
Brian?
I think recognizing that there's going to be hot button issues that come up after presentations and making sure that that opportunity is there. It hits the same, the same gist of it, but then it is already in the, it's already posted. So people would know they have that opportunity where if it's dependent upon an individual making that motion to suspend the rules, I think you kind of run into a slippery slope with word. But if we don't suspend the rules on there, so there's the issue. And when we set the agenda, you, you can choose, that's the, the liberty of the president when they set the agenda with it. But to introduce that as a possibility, I don't think is a bad idea.
James?
So hearing your explanation, I think is the two options serve two different purposes, right? The purpose of suspending the rules would be, hey, someone missed their slot, right? They're late and we can now invite them to post a second public forum as part of the agenda. Invite someone in the audience to respond to the presentation ad hoc, right? They hear something and now they're critical of it and want to come out, so I, I, they aren't the same gist in my mind. I think you have to be very careful inviting a, an opportunity for a, a response from the public to a presentation because it kind of fundamentally changes the flow, because now to the subjectivity of it is now the president i- is held liable for when that criticism, criticism is allowed to take place and when it's not. So they're very different, and so.
Brian?
I think the subjectivity of it becomes when we're allowing people that opportunity after as well. I think having in, in the minutes for our meeting agenda removes the subjectivity of it as opposed to, we had one group show up late, I understand, we're going to allow them to speak. I think we, it becomes more subjective by people kind of coming in. If it's posted on there, it gives them that opportunity. If it's a direct response to a major presentation, similar to what we had, they've gotten more information from it. I'll be honest, I don't anticipate a ton of people coming in on either one, but I think that gives us more opportunity to hear from people in response to it than the second one. And I'm fine with both. I mean, it's within our rules, we can do it, but.
I think we've talked about it adequately. Could we maybe, if there's strong feelings, discuss it again at the next meeting after there's more time to think about it?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think it matters for purposes of this policy. This is, that's really how you want to set the agenda. And I think if you speak to the vice president and the president who work with the superintendent to set the agenda as to what your expectations are. I, I just want to remind the board, your meeting is not a public input session. You, you don't have to allow public comment. You do and, and you do so very liberally. It's for you to conduct your business. The purpose of your meeting is the board conducting its business. So if you, that's, you know, the point of your feedback sessions that you've set up so that the public can provide that feedback to you in accordance with the facility task force. We did do that. We did intermix the, on the agenda, the public comment. It got really messy. That's. Okay, moving on. Last one. Virtual meetings and board member participation meetings via technology. Um, I'm proud to say that we had this policy in place prior to COVID. So we were on the cutting edge of virtual meeting participation. Uh, we did learn a few things during COVID and so this, these changes just reflect those things that we learned and to make this policy a little bit better.
Thank you. Oh, Andrew?
Uh, thank you. So I think at the time and I, I, I remember we talked about this and we were kind of taking a baby, a baby step into it. And at, at the time, it was felt safer to say that an individual board member uh, doesn't have the right to insist on participating remotely. The reality, you know, the, the reality today is I, I don't think anyone should be making that judgment call for another, for another board member. It's legal, it's established. It's frequent and I think that should just be, you know, an individual board member may participate in meetings virtually. That's the current practice anyways.
Where, Andrew, can you point me out to where that language is?
It's right up top in purpose. An individual board member has no right to insist on the ability to participate in any capacity uh, in a board meeting remotely via telephone, video conference or other technology.
The, the only thing I would caution is Josh is fabulous and our infrastructure is amazing. If something were hap, were to happen and we wouldn't have any technology available, I think that's, that's the limit. Where a board member is insisting, you have to do this for me, but the technology, something has happened to the grid and we're not able to accommodate that.
I guess I'd rather say it a lot clearer than that, because right now, right now, again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying Laura would do this, but we're writing policy for the future. What if the board president is not too bothered by, oh, Chucky darn Brian can't make it tonight, I guess, because I'm going to call him on this, but we're going to let, um, someone else do it. I mean, uh, I, I do understand that there, you know, I, yes, I do think it shouldn't. uh, I, I do understand that there, you know, I, yes, I do think it shouldn't. If a board member's trying to participate remotely, that, that should be the secondary option. If the tech fails, I don't think they have the right to, yeah, delay the whole meeting, although I do think, I do think they should be able to try to go lower tech. I remember when we've had people traveling for certain closed sessions, we've had a phone on the, a phone on the table, so I think, but yeah, I just don't think there should be a, a picking and choosing anymore. Or we don't think you're right, you, we don't think your reason is good enough, right? Just don't think that. There might have been a time for that. I just don't think it is anymore.
So if I reworded that sentence to indicate that so long as the technology is available.
Any board member does have the right to assist?
An individual board member may, um, participate in any board meeting remotely so long via telephone, video, or other technology, so long as such technology is available.
Sure, as long as that means if, but that means if, if a phone call to a cell phone works, it's, it's available. It doesn't have to be the main. Yeah, okay, thank you.
James?
I'm wondering if we even need the sentence. So the sentence above it, no individual member may, may be excluded from any meeting, right? That they can be physically present. Uh, but if there's traffic, there's some reason why they're delayed. We're not gonna postpone or stop the board main. We're gonna look for a quorum, and if we have a quorum, we're gonna continue, right? So why are we making an exception for remote? If the technology is not there, it's traffic, right? You're not gonna, you, you don't make it. We have a quorum. It's posted for a particular time, we move on. So do we actually need the sentence?
I don't think you do.
Oh. No.
Andrew, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Does state law, I mean, eh, does state law clearly say I can, I, I, I can participate remote if I want to and it's, it's my choice, or does it not? Is it not yet covered? I'm guessing maybe not.
Doesn't say you can't. So, so long as you're following the proper posting notices.
I'd feel better if you have the right to. Except if the technology doesn't work.
Lynn?
Just for what it's worth, um, when I read this, I had the same response that Andrew did. I thought, whoa, what is this? They're saying you don't have permission, you, you can't participate for remotely, you know, like if you have a, a sick person at home or something like that, so, um, I, I understand Andrew's concern about it and, um, being new to this all, I was kind of shocked when I saw that.
I will revise. Okay, that's it for the 100 series.
Next, we're moving on to policy 383.2, curricular dogs in the school setting.
So when I used to litigate and write briefs, I would be very creative in how I wrote them, and I'd find some really profound quote to always start my briefs or use words that I've never used before. So I did, I, I got a little excited when I got to use some quotes and, in writing this, um, cover, cover letter for, for this policy. But in, in all seriousness, um, w- we have been on a journey with this policy. What started out as employees wanting to bring their own dogs to work and school and delving into that, all of the different nooks and crannies that this has taken us down. Um, it was readily apparent that there is the right way to do this, and the right way isn't going to make everyone happy. But the right way is going to protect our kids, and it's gonna protect those who are bringing their dogs in to meet our kids. And it's gonna still provide the benefits to students that dogs in classrooms have provided. So this is our dipping our toe into the waters. Hopefully, things become a little bit more clear in the legal liability landscape and in, um, insurance companies who are willing to provide, uh, coverage for this, as well as the different therapy organizations who certify dogs to be therapy dogs. So that is, uh, um, my intro to this policy. Any questions or concerns on this one? Go ahead.
Brian?
I want to thank you for putting the time into this. I could just see the fun leaving as it was on, but that's why we have you here, is to make sure that we are protected. And the, the amount of work you put into this, it was, it was concerning seeing what other districts are doing and for us to take the lead on it. Um, so, thanks.
Lynn?
I know you are all waiting with bated breath to find out how Xena is doing in her move to becoming a therapy dog. She passed her second test this morning. And, um, after reading this, I thought it was very enlightening, so I called the organization that if she passes her third test, we'll certify her. And, um, asked them whether they would, because it says if you are employed by the district, the insurance won't cover you. And so I asked them, if I'm employed theoretically, I get paid by the district, but it's not my job to go into the classroom and teach children and work with children, would you cover me? And they said, yes, up to $5 million, because it's not your job to do it. You're not being paid to go into the classroom, so you can do it. So there you go.
Thanks for the validation.
Andrew and then Laura.
Um, just, just saying this strict, strictly for the, the viewing audience, can you just clarify that this makes no, no changes to service animals, which many people might be thinking of, and is a completely different thing that is a right?
Thank you, Andrew. Yes, service animals are protected under the ADA as well as under Students 504 Rights, the Rehabilitation Act. Service dogs, um, serve a purpose of an individual's disability. Therapy animals are comfort animals, um, thinking of going into nursing homes, providing that companionship, um, providing a way of children connecting, those sorts of things. Two very different things, and the definitions are in the cover letter for the policy in case the public would like to view those.
It's been a while since we actually addressed this. I think during my time on the board, we have talked about this, but it might be a good time. Are board members technically employees of the district?
I'll get back to you on that.
It's more complicated than you think it is.
Correct.
Yeah, so, um, correct. That'd be good for us to revisit.
But, but as Lynn has described, the answer from the therapy dog organization was correct. It's not within the scope of her employment if she's considered an employee of the district as a board member. So that's why she does have coverage for her animal. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes, that concludes the policy governance portion.
Which, uh, which brings us to the end of our agenda, so, um, we're going, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.